Hi, you're ready.
We're on?
Yes.
Good evening. And welcome to the Tuesday, May 12th, Warwick Public School, School Committee Meeting. Meeting will come to water now. At this time, anyone wishing to make a public comment may do so by emailing written comments to publiccomment@warwicksschool.org. Those comments are due in by noon today, and we have quite a plethora of them expounding.
Okay. Dear Chairperson Backus, Vice Chair Cobbden, Mr. Cornell, Mr. Adams, and Mr. Testa, I recently learned that a physical therapist, occupational therapist, and speech therapist are three of five educators who receive layoff notices from the Warwick School Department. Just last week, my husband and I had a meeting between the Lipit Elementary Special Educators working with my younger son Douglas Horton and the new team of educators who will work with Douglas at Veterans Memorial Middle School next fall. I also have an older son Russell Horton, who is in the Special Education Program at VETS. During this transition meeting, I praised the experiences both of my sons have had with the Special Education Program in the Warwick Public Schools since their pre-K years. I am concerned about these layoffs. It is my understanding that the Special Education Program in Warwick is one of the best in the state, and losing these three educators will adversely affect the quality of the services and instructions for all of our special needs children in the city. If you would like to speak with me further about my concerns, please let me know. My husband and I will try to attend the next meeting. Sincerely, Peggy Chang. To whom it may concern, my son is a kindergartner at Lipit and receives speech services with Taylor Dupierre. I'm not sure if I'm saying these names correctly, so my apologies if I don't. I recently heard from the Lipit staff that she may be laid off. This is absolutely heartbreaking to me. As a mother of a new student entering school for the first time with a speech problem, Taylor has been more than helpful with Logan. I noticed the progress they were making together as a team within a couple of weeks. Without Taylor, I'm not sure my son would speak as clearly as he does. Logan loves his speech therapy sessions with her. He would always come home after a day of speech class so excited to tell me about it. Taylor is always sure to keep me informed on Logan's progress and tells me what we should work on. Taylor is a huge asset to the Lipit School System. Consequently, I'm concerned about not only my son, but the other students she assists as well. Brittany Hutchings. As a longtime Warwick resident parent and special ed teaching assistant, I am writing today to ask you that you reconsider your plan to eliminate the position of one of our most dedicated school physical therapists. Over the last two decades, I've had the pleasure of knowing and working with many professionals across the school support services spectrum, but few as closely as Janet Daniel. For approximately the last five years, she has been the PT assigned to my one-to-one student, a female middle schooler with cerebral palsy. Without question, Ms. Janet has been one of the most caring, reliable individuals I've ever worked with. Her dedication to her students, as well as to the families and school staff supporting them, has been beyond anyone's expectations. Before Janet even became my student's PT, I recall her working an entire summer with a young man during the ESY program who had been left out of his elementary school graduation, with her help and support, his entire extended family, and all of the ESY staff and students filed into the school auditorium to see him walk proudly across the stage. I've never been able to understand how or why he wasn't included in his class graduation, but I'll never forget the look of pride in his face that day. Jan has always been dependable about seeing my student for her scheduled therapy sessions and works hard to make up any missed time. Additionally, she has consistently made herself available to my students' family and to me, as well as other school staff for consultation about equipment, repairs, adjustments, basically anything that could possibly improve her school mobility experience. Recently, when I was facing health challenges of my own, she stepped up with suggestions and modifications that allowed me to continue working safely with my student. Thank you for your time. I hope you will reconsider and not allow one of our best to slip away. Respectfully submitted, Linda Gavitt. I'm writing this letter on behalf of our speech-language therapist, Ms. Taylor Dupierre. Ms. Dupierre has been at Lipit since 2019, serving students of all ability levels and grades. Taylor has done an outstanding job building a rapport with each and every student she services. She has been an asset to our students, colleagues, and parents. Taylor has a genuine love and passion for her students. The students have grown and improved under Ms. Dupierre's teaching. Each and every time she walks into my classroom, the children light up and are thrilled to go with her. Not only is Ms. Dupierre an amazing SLP, she is a resource to our teachers and is willing to help in any way she can. Taylor has an absolute essential and necessary position as an SLP. It would be devastating to lose such a kind, caring, compassionate teacher and team player. I sincerely hope you reconsider her layoff notice. Thank you for your time and consideration on this important matter. Alicia Secone, Special Educator, First Grade, Co. taught Lipit. To whom it may concern, my name is Lauren Sharkey, and I am an occupational therapist in the Warwick School Department. I am writing this on behalf of my colleague, but more importantly, as an advocate of some of the most vulnerable children in the city of Warwick. There are proposed layoffs for an occupational therapist and a physical therapist for the 2021 school year. Our current caseloads are already incredibly high, and the thought of having to absorb an entire caseload of another therapist is not only overwhelming, but it would be absolutely impossible. It would mean greatly reducing the quality of the services that we are currently able to provide to the children in our schools. We would be forced to miss service time to attend countless meetings. Currently, we're able to provide RTI services to students at the schools who are struggling, but don't qualify for an IEP. If we are forced to take on more students due to this layoff, we would no longer be able to help these children. We would be forced to cover more schools, which would mean more travel time between schools, which would reduce the amount of time we have for direct therapy. Again, the occupational and physical therapists in the school department service some of the most needy children in our city. To eliminate these positions will directly impact these children and the services that require and deserve. These are the children that are struggling the most during distance learning when hands-on therapies such as OT and PT simply cannot be done effectively. I hope you join me in advocating for these children by not laying off the people who support them. Thank you for your consideration in this matter, Lauren Sharkey. Dear Warwick School Committee Members, I am writing today to express my concerns regarding the proposed layoffs this evening. While I disagree with all of the layoffs, I would like to speak specifically to the proposed elementary library and guidance layoffs. Having spent the majority of my career as an elementary educator, I feel strongly that library-media specialists are absolutely essential at the elementary level. When I taught at the elementary level, I was lucky to have worked with amazing librarians, librarians who, unlike some librarians today, weren't overburdened with servicing three schools within their schedule. I was lucky enough to have worked with librarians that were present and available to play in with me, librarians who were able to collaborate with me and support my curriculum within their own instruction. For example, when my students were assigned research papers, the school librarian was instrumental in navigating students through the research process, most often providing the only resources accessible to students for those assignments. The library and media technology specialists would also support the research and writing process by teaching students how to write bibliography using various applications. In fact, I would agree that our librarians are the technology integration specialists at the elementary setting. The elementary librarian not only fulfills this role for students, but also serves as an invaluable resource for peers within the building by providing technological support, a position which we all agree is essential at the middle and high school levels. Another essential position, and one that I am compelled to speak in support of, is that of guidance counselors at all levels. I speak from firsthand experience when I tell you that school counselors are a critical member of the team at the middle school level. As a middle school educator, I can attest to the fact that our kids experience social-emotional crisis daily. Having immediate access to school counselors is imperative to the well-being of our students. We mustn't overburden those in this role and create instances where student access to support services is denied because of understaffing. It would be cruel and irresponsible to deny children services so desperately needed. I implore you to find the funding to staff these essential positions. I also urge you to carefully consider the consequences resulting from any approved layoffs this evening. I trust that you will make the right decision for the children of Warwick. Thank you for putting the needs of our children first. Respectfully, Pauline Pinto, Science Teacher, Warwick Veterans Memorial Middle School. Members of the School Committee and Superintendent Thornton, I am a parent of a senior at Pilgrim High School. I am deeply saddened to see the lack of support of our seniors who have missed out on so much this year. While I understand the health concerns surrounding the pandemic, I also have seen the creative ways other districts have celebrated their senior class of 2020. Coventry High School, which has approximately 350 seniors in their graduating class, has supported their students by celebrating them on social media. They also celebrated them through a virtual scholarship night on YouTube Live, and she does have the link here, as well as prepared a virtual awards night for those students who have earned them. There is absolutely no reason why Warwick cannot step up and do the same thing. Instead, our students are receiving their 15 minutes of fame literally on June 4th. Think about the social-emotional toll this is taking on these kids. Graduation gives our children a sense of closure on one chapter of their lives while beginning the next. Our children are not getting that. They are not getting the opportunity to see their friends graduate. They are not getting the opportunity to be recognized for their hard work and accomplishments over their high school career, and many missed out on their last season of sports. They are getting the bare minimum. I think you can do better for our seniors. Please put your heads together and do better. Lisa Kirnen. Dear School Committee Members, we are writing to you in regards to Janet Daniel, one of the physical therapists in our school district. We heard from someone else that there is a proposed plan to lay her off. Please allow us to say that Janet is an excellent PT, and we have known her throughout the years because she has worked in the past with our oldest son, Demetrius, when he attended Lipit Elementary School. And presently, she works with our middle son Nathan, who attends Oakland Beach Elementary. Janet has always gone above and beyond the call of duty, and has always offered great insight and feedback regarding our son's therapies and provided guidance on how we can help them thrive at home. She has always shown genuine love and concern for our boys, which a quality you can't teach. Additionally, it concerns us that Nathan will have to be assigned a new PT at the end of the 2019-20 school year. If this happens, it will make it more challenging for the new PT to come in and offer the same kind of unique and tailored therapies for our son during ESY, especially if the social distancing order is still in place. Not to mention, our son has a hard time with change in his routine as it is. Please consider how you vote, because it would be a great loss to our school system and the families if we lose Janet. Thank you for your time. Daniel and Sandra Rivera. Dear Warwick School Committee Members, I was distraught to learn that the elementary library department is being considered for a possible layoff for the upcoming 2021 school year. As you are aware, last year, there was a retirement in the library area which was never filled. This impacted the elementary library program in a devastating way by increasing class load and cutting the open library period for all elementary schools. The open library period is an integral part of our job, as it is when the library-media specialist supports the teachers and students with curriculum needs, research, projects, and technology. As a department, we were hoping to regain the open library period with the school committee, adding back the library-media specialist position that was never filled last year, not to lose another one. It's been a difficult year covering all the library classes with the current staffing. Looking at the schedule, I cannot see how we could possibly cover all classes if we lose another position. We currently have library-media specialists covering three schools. This does not make for consistent learning environment for our students. Over the past 19 years, working in the Warwick School Department, I have happily watched as the elementary library program has evolved into an innovative curriculum. The 21st century librarian does not just teach library and literacy skills. We also teach technology skills, computer programming, and information technology to both the students and faculty. We teach students how to be independent thinkers and learners. Over the past eight weeks, we have been instrumental in the distance learning endeavor by instructing teachers, students, and parents in many different platforms currently being utilized. Take a look at the professional development offerings to the entire Warwick School Department these past weeks of distance learning. It was the elementary library-media specialist who overwhelmingly instructed the staff in these offerings. This past year, the library-media specialists have also been involved with the University of Rhode Island, RIDE, and the CS4RI Initiative in developing the Warwick School Department Computer Science Pathway for grades K through 12. The elementary library-media specialists have been certified to teach and are currently teaching computer programming using the code.org curriculum. The elementary library specialist plays an important role in keeping our students on the right track for learning and understanding the technology needed to succeed now and in the future. I applaud the school committee for understanding the importance of the technology integration specialists at the middle and high school level and not cutting those positions last week. I want to impress upon you now that the library-media specialists are the technology integration specialists at the elementary level. Instead of looking to cut one position, please consider adding back the position that was not filled last year. Suzanne Skipington, Library Media Specialist, Oakland Beach and Robertson Schools. To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter on behalf of our speech-language therapist, Ms. Taylor Dupierre. Ms. Dupierre has been at Lipit since 2019, servicing students at all ability levels and grades. Taylor has done an outstanding job building a rapport with each and every student she services. She has been an asset to us students, colleagues, and parents. Taylor has a genuine love and passion for her students. The students have grown and improved under Ms. Dupierre's teaching. Each and every time she walks into my classroom, the children light up and are thrilled to go with her. Not only is Ms. Dupierre an amazing SLP, she is a resource to our teachers and is willing to help in any way she can. Taylor has an absolute essential and necessary position as an SLP. It would be devastating to lose such a kind, caring, compassionate teacher and team player. I sincerely hope you reconsider her layoff notice. Thank you for your time and consideration on this important matter. Alicia Secone, Special Educator, First Grade, Co. taught Lipit. My name is Jennifer Rooney, and I have been an SLP in Warwick for 19 years. In that time, our population has grown significantly, and we work diligently to provide services to our students with communication disorders. I am very concerned regarding the layoff in my department. Taylor has been an instrumental part of our team for several years. She is dedicated and professional. Aside from her qualifications, we cannot afford to lose her or any other SLP. We are already stretched very thin to providing services. Please reconsider the layoff in our department. Without the cut, without the cut in a therapist, Warwick currently has one SLP for every 527 students, and we have medically fragile and severe profound classrooms that other districts do not. This is higher than Boroughville, that has one SLP for every 454 students with no medically fragile programs. Cranston, that has one SLP for every 431 students. West Warwick has one SLP for, if you was waiting on this data, and Central Falls has a class load cap for SLPs of 35 per SLP, while my caseload is 60 and I'm spreading over four schools. In addition, a special education audit was conducted by Carol Brown, Special Educator, this year in the fall of 2019. As shared at the 12-5-19 Speech Language Department meeting, the audit found that our department was grossly understaffed and underfunded with supplies. We have been so overwhelmed these past few years that an anticipated vacancy for an SLP was posted on school spring for the 2021 school year. SLPs are case managers, expected to manage IEP and evaluation team meetings, bill Medicaid, and conduct screenings. The ability to complete all of these tasks in a timely manner is largely dependent on caseload and impossible as the numbers increase. Some of these duties have timelines that are dictated by IDEA and state regulations. Failure to abide by these timelines can result in due process hearings with associated costs to the district. Students on smaller caseloads are more likely to make measurable progress on functional communication measures than those on large caseloads. Student outcomes also depend on the SLP's ability to provide services that integrate the child's curriculum. Large caseloads often limit the time available, become familiar with curriculum and standards across all grade levels. Reduction in staff will likely result in unforeseen costs associated with due process hearings as students face a delay or loss of services. Not to mention, SOP burnout and possible loss of some of the best SLPs in the state who have, up to this point, been very loyal to Warwick Public Schools and the students that we service. Thank you for your time and consideration, Jennifer Rooney, Speech Language Pathologist. I am writing this letter in support of our physical therapist, Janet Daniel. I have been lucky to work with Janet for many years at Oakland Beach Elementary. Janet has provided physical therapy services for some of my past students, as well as one current student. I cannot tell you enough how understanding Janet is at her job. When you witness Janet working with a student, it is very evident how much she loves her job. She always has a smile on her face as she engages students in her creative activities. I have seen students in the building start in a wheelchair at the beginning of the school year and then transition to a walker, and then walk the hallway independently at the end of the school year. It is such an amazing and heartwarming thing to see, and it is due to the caring and nurturing guidance of Janet. She is a true professional and a valued and respected part of our special education team. To lose Janet in this way would be a huge loss to all of the students that she provides physical therapy services to. Please reconsider this decision for the children. Thank you. Joan Thoreau, Special Educator, Oakland Beach. Dear School Committee Members and Warwick Administrators, my name is Patricia Gagnon, and my daughter Sophie is in fourth grade at Lipit Elementary School. Sophie is medically fragile and has been receiving special education services, including physical therapy, speech therapy, and occupational therapy since 2013. I wanted to start off by saying I am incredibly happy with the services she receives. Her teachers and therapists are wonderful and have helped her immensely in her years in school. I am writing this letter because it has recently come to my attention that there are proposed layoffs for therapists in Warwick Schools, including speech therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. These layoffs are very concerning to me as a parent of a medically fragile child. Therapists currently cover more than one school in our district as it is. Laying off therapists will mean fewer therapists covering more schools, which will be very difficult. This will also pose a problem in the quality of the services received by children like my daughter. Will the needs of children like my daughter still be able to be met if there are not enough therapists? What will happen when we all return to schools and there aren't enough therapists to ensure that these children are getting the services in their IEPs? I understand that these times are difficult and unprecedented. However, I do not think that the services that children like Sophie receive should be cut or affected because of these circumstances. Therefore, I ask you to please consider these students and reject the proposal to eliminate the therapist positions. Sincerely, Patricia Gagnon. To whom it may concern, I am writing to you in regards to the potential layoffs that are on the agenda for tonight's school committee meeting. I wanted to express my support for not making any cuts to physical education and guidance in Warwick. As a secondary teacher for the last 18 years, teaching health and PE at both the high school and middle school, I feel that these positions are vital to our schools. Physical education is extremely important for students' overall physical, mental, emotional health and social health. By eliminating positions, you are showing students that physical education is not important. We want to teach our students to be lifelong learners and make important decisions about healthy eating, exercise, and how to incorporate a lifetime of health and wellness. The CDC states that when we increase a student's level of physical activity, we improve their grades, test scores, and that they stay on task more in the classroom, not to mention improving their overall health and wellness. We understand that there is a connection for students to academically perform better in school with regular physical activity. Along with academic improvements, we lower their chance of getting diabetes, high blood pressure, et cetera, and improve their overall cardiovascular health and muscular strength. Guidance also has a huge impact on a student. By having a counselor that they can go to academically or any unrelated questions is important for their overall growth. By cutting positions, you are telling students that these one-on-one relationships are not important. These counselors take time to build students self-esteem, get them involved with programs and social groups that cater to their personality. By encouraging them to explore many skills or different pathways, this gives students more opportunities. Each counselor does a wonderful job getting to know each and every one of their personalities and really listens and empathizes with each of their students. By eliminating these positions, it puts more of a caseload on the remainder of the counselors, which makes it more difficult. In retrospect, I wholeheartedly believe that not only should we keep these positions, we should add more. We should be the leaders in education by adding more PE minutes to our current curriculum. The benefits of physical activity for our overall health should be our top priority. By cutting these positions, you are essentially telling students that PE is not important, when in fact, it is extremely important. I feel that guidance is also important in their growth and development, and the individual attention a student gets from their counselor is crucial during their academic years. Thank you for taking the time to read my email. Stay safe and healthy. Sincerely, Laura Profetto, Warwick Veterans Middle School Physical Education Health Teacher. I just want to reach out and let you know how valuable our guidance positions are at the middle school level. We need all the support personnel we can get. It is imperative to our students' mental well-being, more so now than ever before. I personally appreciate how valuable they are to students in need. These professionals not only deal with academic concerns, but all that goes with being in the middle school setting, including social and emotional. Thank you for reconsidering this budget cut. Sincerely, Jessica Kenny. I would respectfully request that the school committee seriously reconsider the proposal to reduce the number of physical and speech therapists within the district. Yes, the district is facing some hard choices, but in my opinion, this is not an area that should be cut. If anything should be considered for elimination, I would suggest that you examine senior positions within WPS Admin. This is my 21st year with Warwick Public Schools, and for the life of me, there are some positions within Warwick Public Schools that I still don't know exactly what they do. The positions you are proposing to eliminate serve our most vulnerable population, in my opinion, must be retained. Alan Palazzo, Pilgrim Social Studies Department. I would like to comment on the request from the superintendent to lay off seven WTU members. I would specifically like to ask the school committee to reconsider the layoff of Dee Recor. I have had the pleasure of working with Dee at both Tulgate High School and currently at Veterans Middle School. Dee is hardworking and dedicated. She is a team player and an integral part of our school counseling department. She collaborates with administrators, support staff, teachers, parents, and students. I'm sure that making cuts to support staff during this difficult and uncertain time is the best interest of those students. School counselors have been working really hard to reach out to the students during this difficult time and offer support. These are unprecedented times, and we are finding that students need social-emotional support more than ever. Jennifer Christiansen. As I am sure you are aware, one of the main purposes of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is to ensure that all children with disabilities have available to them a free, appropriate, or public education that emphasizes special education and related services designed to meet their unique needs and prepare them for further education, employment, and independent living. Our role as speech-language pathologists is to provide effective, research-based practices to address the unique and challenging needs of all of our students in compliance with IDEA. Warwick Public School's speech-language pathologists proudly serve a dynamic role in the provision of the special education services. In fulfillment of our commitment to provide consistent, quality services, members of our department work diligently in a collaborative effort with educational teams across the district to assist students in achieving their goals. Not only are we part of a comprehensive team, but we also serve as case managers for students receiving speech as a standalone service. In addition to providing direct and consultive IEP 504 and RTI services, we conduct and participate in meetings, complete Medicaid building, and all paperwork related to our duties, and administer evaluations and screenings in accordance with national, state, and district policies. It has come to our attention that the district has proposed to eliminate a full-time position in our department. According to the recent audit by Barton Gilman, quotations, "The district's special education staffing is lacking in a number of areas, including an adequate number of steep speech-language pathologists." At this time, every member of our department is working at or beyond capacity to provide services to students. Our services are critical and essential to the success and progress of hundreds of students with special needs across the district. The loss of a position would further overwhelm an already understaffed department. This decision negatively impacts not only our department, but also our students and ultimately, the entire school community. As both a taxpayer and employee of Warwick Public Schools, I implore you to reject the decision to eliminate a position from the Speech Language and Hearing Department. I thank you in advance for your understanding of any attention to my concerns for your continued support of our efforts. Melissa Lamoff, Speech Language Pathologist, Warwick Schools. I am writing in an attempt to compel the school committee to not cut the physical therapist position. Given the amount of money we pay in taxes in the size of Warwick, having only two physical therapists in the entire city seems a bit thin. I want to let this committee know that I will be actively campaigning for the removal of any school member who votes for cutting this therapist. I want to let this committee know that I will be actively campaigning for the removal of any school member who votes for cutting this therapist. If the members of the committee cannot do what's right by the taxpaying citizens of Warwick, then they need to be replaced by people who will. Tony Seng. Please consider the students who rely heavily on physical therapy and the parents and families who rely on these services as well before cutting this crucial role. Having only two physical therapists for twenty schools would leave these two individuals overburdened and not able to address the needs of the entire community. These students are already being severely impacted by this pandemic, both physically and emotionally, and who knows what delays they will have suffered by the time the school year starts in September. As a Warwick taxpayer, I am urging you to keep all the physical therapists on the payroll for the sake of the children who rely on them and have invested relationship with these outstanding therapists. Liz Webb. I am writing to express my opinion as not just a Warwick taxpayer and parent, but special educator in Warwick Public Schools. I work hand-in-hand with speech OT and PT. I can't imagine having one of these teachers laid off and what it would mean for my students' needs. Their caseloads are very large, as it is, and they work tirelessly to service their students while completing paperwork, notes, et cetera, after their workday is complete. Taking away one of these positions just puts an almost impossible load on those left to pick up the students. I understand there are budget issues, but cutting the teachers should be the last item to ever be considered. Jamie Pedro. I wish that Mr. Thornton and the school committee would rethink this year's graduation and make it more memorable for the graduating class of 2020. I'm writing this in hopes that the school committee will rethink their position on just allowing two adults at the graduation this year. Many students may have stepparents and also older siblings that may be role models to these students. You could allow five to six people per student and still keep social distancing. I find it ridiculous that the school committee would even consider cutting the physical therapist position for next year. There are plenty of children that need these people. Russell Howard, Concerned Parent for Our Children's Future. Kayla Dupierre has worked with me collaboratively this year in my co-taught classroom as a speech and language pathologist. I am the classroom teacher. She has done an amazing job coordinating appropriate and instructional lessons for the students. Kayla takes time to meet with the special education teacher and myself to discuss student progress and needs on a weekly basis. She was a great part of our first-grade team. I thought her interactions with the students were kind and loving. Kayla's personality shines through in her teaching. She has a way of driving instruction that draws the student in and allows them to feel comfortable to learn. I've also been involved in team meetings where I have seen her run the meeting as well as take notes on the events. The kindness and compassion that she possesses carries over to parent interactions. She seemed to always highlight the positive of student alone with addressing needs. Kayla always took the time to listen to parents' concerns and worked on developing plans to address them. Kayla was an essential part of our school team this year. She was a bright light for our students and colleagues. I hope that we, as school department, can do everything in our power to ensure that she continues to touch the lives of students and families in Warwick. Thank you for your time and consideration. This is important matter, Heather Nolan, first-grade co-taught teacher. I'm writing with deep concern over the elimination of a school counselor position. As a guidance department chair for several years, I have seen the role of the school counselor morph from that of being primarily a scheduler into someone who is an intricate part, balls-back aspects of a school day, not only for the student, but for parents and staff as well. Along with our responsibilities, our caseloads have also grown. School counselors are often responsible for well over two hundred and fifty students each year. I could list all of our responsibilities, but that list could go on for pages. Instead, I will focus on new responsibilities that will be added to our plate next year, and that is Zello. Counselors will be responsible to learn and then implement this new program with each student multiple times throughout the year. Quite honestly, I have expressed my concern already about counselors finding the time to accomplish this, as our days are already bustling with other responsibilities. The district recently eliminated all elementary school counselors, and to this day, I still feel that was a mistake. Our students deserve to have counselors available to them, especially with all of the stress and emotional instability that our students experience. Please reconsider cutting this position. Brenda Rizendi, Guidance Department Chair, Veterans Middle School. I am so dismayed to hear that the layoff of Janet Daniel, a very talented PT. She has always served our students with the utmost integrity and been a tremendous resource to all teachers and students. I'm a co-taught kindergarten special education teacher at Oakland Beach School. Please do all that you can to ensure our school and district does not lose Janet in her position. Jane McGivernan. My name is Michaela Amrell. I am writing on behalf of the SLP Taylor Dupierre that works with students in my kindergarten class at Lipid. I just received notification that she received a layoff notice. She is a valuable asset to the Lipid community as well as Warwick schools. She is an SLP gem. Thank you, Michaela Amrell, kindergarten teacher, Lipid. I am writing in support of Janet Daniel, the physical therapist at Oakland Beach School. Janet is such an integral, beloved member of our staff. I just can't imagine a world without her. She takes an interest in everyone and is so kind to those around her. The students seem to love working with her. I've watched them sometimes in passing, and she is so good and patient with them. To lose Janet would be a serious step backwards for not only our school, but our entire school system. Ginger Flynn, Secretary, Oakland Beach School. Please accept this as a letter of support for Janet, one of Warwick School's physical therapists. I've had the privilege of working with her since I started Winmen. On multiple occasions, she has stepped up and gone above and beyond to assist us with providing needed care or support to our students. Janet has many times shown up without being summoned when staff was needed and TAs were not available, just to be sure needed services were immediate. Her relationship with students goes beyond providing a service. Janet is a source of support for faculty and family members who are trying to provide needed care for fragile students. Reaching out to her is as easy as a phone call or email. If she doesn't know the answer, she finds it. Warwick students will suffer such a great loss if this potential layoff should occur for such a valuable member of our community. Respectfully, Ellie G. Lu, School Nurse Teacher, Winmen Middle School. I am writing to you today on behalf of Dee Recor, Guidance Counselor at Warwick Vets. I'm devastated to hear that she is one of the recommended layoffs. She is such an amazing part of our school. I cannot tell you how often I have talked to her about a student this year, emailed her a concern, or invited her to come to a team meeting. She is the first one in the building every day and always takes action when it is needed with a student. She also is an amazing part of our faculty. She ran a group of improv this year with teachers to help us in our classrooms with difficult students. Please reconsider this layoff notice because our school will not be the same without her. Kristen Beers, English Teacher at Warwick Vets Middle School. Think back on your middle school experience. Would it have been better if you had a kind, caring, supportive guidance counselor who listened to you, advocated for you, and helped you navigate through conflicts and challenges? Personally, my middle school experience would have been a whole lot better if I had had Dee Recor as my guidance counselor. And as such, I was saddened to hear of the proposed cut to Dee's guidance position at Vets. Guidance is of paramount importance in middle school, and Dee is a vital part of our guidance community. She services nearly three hundred students. Her door is always open to them, and her approach with the kids and staff is welcoming and friendly. Dee's warmth and genuineness create a safe haven. Dee is not afraid to take risks and offer suggestions. In fact, Dee Recor started an improvisation group to teach teachers how to relate better with their students. I've seen firsthand how successful these approaches are. Dee is committed to quality, growth, and progress, and to helping Vets be the most positive school community that can be. Her loss would be felt by our staff and most certainly by our students. Middle schoolers need guidance counselors, and especially counselors like Dee. Please reconsider this layoff. Patricia Bestia, Grade Six English, Warwick Vets. I'm writing this to plead with you to reconsider laying off Dee Recor. I've had the pleasure of working with Ms. Recor for the last two years while my children have been attending Warwick Vets Middle School and have been looking forward to working with her with my younger children as well. I have several adopted children with many special needs. Ms. Recor has been incredibly helpful with many different issues that have come up throughout this time. She has worked quickly and thoroughly to address any concerns I may have had and has helped head off and/or resolve several difficult situations for my children and me. She assisted and negotiated all the details for my older homeschooled son to come and shadow teachers on two separate occasions as he is hoping to go to college and study secondary education. This was one huge bright spot for him in an otherwise very disappointing senior year. Ms. Recor has become a trusted advisor to me and my children, and I'm very disappointed to hear any consideration of laying her off. Please reconsider. Trish Enos. We are writing to you regarding recent layoff notices that were sent out, specifically cuts to the Speech and Language Department. Our dear colleague Taylor was one of the professionals that received a layoff notice. Taylor services forty-nine students at four total schools, three in district schools and one out-of-district school, Briggs. While we know budget cuts caused the committee to make tough decisions, we are curious to know what the plan is for the forty-nine students that are losing Ms. Dupierre. There are approximately six hundred and seventy-five students in the district that receive speech and language services, and only seventeen speech and language pathologists, including Ms. Dupierre. Ms. Dupierre worked with eight children in our co-taught kindergarten classroom that required services and consultations. She is a professional, dedicated, and is able to teach a wide variety of students that all vary in their speech and language needs. Taylor is willing to collaborate and fully participate in team meetings. She is able to discuss progress with parents and keep data on each of her students in order to make sure that her teaching is most effective in meeting their IEP goals and objectives. Taylor will join classroom lessons and observe her students in order to gain valuable information about their school day and how to best support them. She is very much a part of the educational team at our school, offering advice, support where it is needed. Taylor is committed to her job as an educator and shows up to do the work every single day. Her students feel cared for and listened to, often sharing that their favorite part of their school day was working with her. We respectfully ask that the committee find alternative ways to better support the school budget, as laying off a key member of our educational team is not the way. Our students need professionals that care and love what they do, and that is Ms. Dupierre. Thank you, Sarah Swanson and Stephanie Lawton, kindergarten co-taught Lipid Elementary. Good evening. I am writing about the recommended layoffs that will be presented by Superintendent Thornton. We are not only in the education business, but also the customer service business. Our students are multi-dimensional. They are athletes, musicians, actors, singers, artists, visionaries, and builders. They are all our customers. We have always provided high-quality service to each of these individuals. By making cuts to the customer services they receive, you send a message to students that all services are not important. For example, when you cut guidance counselors, you increase the workload of other guidance counselors and decrease their efficiency and quality. You destroy relationships that have been created with the counselors and at-risk students. Guidance counselors serve as schedulers, confidants, and the front line for the social, emotional needs of all students, including our fragile population. Another example of sending the wrong message is the cuts made to physical education. A few years ago, Warwick cut the amount of physical education minutes for high school students. Drawing on a meta-analysis of more than forty studies that looked at how engaging and regular physical training affects cognition, sibly, and etnia concluded that regular physical activity significantly improves multiple categories of cognitive function in children and adolescents. Researchers found improvements in perceptual skills, IQ, scores on verbal and mathematics tests, concentration, memory, achievement, as measured by a combination of standardized test scores and grades, and academic readiness. Students need an active mind and body now more than ever. Our PE help teachers need to continue to promote lifelong movement, inform students about nutrition and mental health, and provide instruction about diseases that affect their health. We should be increasing physical education minutes and promoting a healthy lifestyle so that they can live long, happy, and healthy lives. Our customer service should be multifaceted. When you cut positions, services are stripped. You tell students that they are not worthy. By keeping a high level of service for our students, our customers, you say you are worthy. Coach Tom Flanders. We learned stuff together. I had fun with her. She helped me with my speech. This is what my six-year-old had to say after I told him the teacher he has come to know, respect, and learned from was no longer going to be there for him. Past few months have been a struggle for everyone, especially our children who have learning and developmental difficulties. Our youngest son Luke has been working with Ms. Dupierre his first year of elementary school. Taylor has been a light for my child who has struggled with this adjustment. Not only was she an amazing speech teacher while school was in, but she has been more involved in his schooling than most other teachers have been during this time. Ms. Dupierre has been sending coloring pages, educational activities, and has been in constant communication with my child this whole time. Most other special education teachers are trying to keep up with all these students and have not been succeeding to the capacity that Ms. Dupierre has been. Taylor has been the best speech teacher we have had pleasure of dealing with within the Warwick school system, and her layoff is not only a loss to the children, it's an injustice to their education and development, but also something that should not be happening. Susan and Tim Bedard. I am writing to ask you that you will seriously not accept a proposal layoffs that the superintendent has recommended tonight. Although I disagree with all layoffs because of the value that each of these professional people bring to the students and families in Warwick, I'm writing to encourage you to seriously not cut the guidance position. I am this guidance counselor. I have never written before to ask to save my position, but I implore you not to accept the superintendent's recommendation. Our students need support staff more than ever. We are vital in helping students with their social, emotional needs. More than ever, students are dealing with stress and anxiety, family issues that are too vast to list, bullying, self-esteem, isolation, questioning their sexual identity, anger, shutting down, depression. I could keep going, but I know you see the point. The role we play in the school is priceless. I love my job because I know I make a difference in students' and parents' lives. I've actually worked with some of you firsthand and your children. They needed someone to trust and to confide in to help them figure out how to deal with issues. How can you put a price tag on this? School counselors don't just sit in their office waiting for a student. We are in the classrooms. We are vital members of the support staff department. We help young minds figure out their career path, help them get back on track academically, work with teachers and administration. We assist students in complex resolution, and so much more. What makes me unique is that I have been laid off before and recalled and have been placed in every school level, which is invaluable. With the recent pandemic, we don't know what the new normal will look like, but cutting any position at this time will be a disservice to the children in the community of Warwick. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Dee Recor. Elementary librarians are needed now more than ever. With the necessity of distance learning, the elementary librarians have been trained in NearPart and Code.org, which is mandated by the governor for elementary computer science. We are already stretched too thin with twenty-five to twenty-six classes in two to three schools, and each having nearly five hundred students. Please keep us staff. Donna Nguyen, Library Media Specialist, Sherman School. I'm a parent to a first grade that Ms. Taylor teaches. I have heard that she, along with some other key staff, will be potentially laid off soon. This is horrible news, as these educators are needed more than ever during this time of uncertainty. I would not be able to teach my daughter the skills she needs through distance learning if I did not have the guidance from Ms. Dupierre. Letting these educators go would be a travesty and a disservice to all students whom they have helped in their careers and are currently assisting in development. I urge you to reconsider this decision. Amanda Wilkerson. Distinguished members of the Warwick School Committee, I am writing in regards to the recent recommendation of laying off guidance positions. Speaking as both a special educator and a parent of a student at the middle school level, guidance counselors are an integral part of our school culture and team. The relationship between professionals collaborating with one another in accordance with the students' best interests far exceeds schedule changes. School guidance counselors are a valuable resource in assisting with students' academic and social, emotional needs. They are essential in assisting special educators with students with special needs. Guidance counselors are often the liaison between parents and educators throughout the day. They provide parents with necessary resources as well as maintain positive relationships with students. Students often seek counsel from guidance when confronted with fear, anxiety, and/or frustration. To reduce the number of guidance positions would be detrimental to the students of our district. Thank you for your time. Stephanie Birmingham, Special Educator, Grade Six, Warwick Veterans Middle School. Dear School Committee Members, we are writing to implore you to vote against cutting service provider positions from special services. At Women Alone, there are proposed layoffs of our speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. At Women Alone, there are proposed layoffs of our speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. We cannot express enough the importance of working as a team as we service the students of the women community. Taylor, Cathy Anne, and Janet are valuable and irreplaceable members of the Women's Special Education Team, who assist in supporting students, families, and the faculty of women. Over the past few years, we have found that their dedication, experience, and knowledge is invaluable. They are always willing to go above and beyond to ensure students are provided with the necessary services and supports to fit their needs. We hope that you will consider your proposal to cut these valuable positions. Kristin Saunders and Jennifer Cutler, Kristin Saunders, Special Education Department Chair, Jennifer Cutler, School Psychologist, Winman Middle School. I am writing to you on behalf of one of your physical therapists you are thinking of laying off. I have worked with Janet for six years since starting at Oakland Beach. She has had many of my students, as well as others in the school, and five of the schools in the district. From what I understand, there will only be two PTs if you vote to lay her off. This will be detrimental to the students, as well as the teachers, teacher assistants, and all those who work with her students. I have on many occasions had to reach out to Janet at another school to fix a piece of PT equipment for my student. She was able to come that day to fix the equipment for the student to use. If you stretch the PTs too thin, they will not be able to fix the equipment, and a parent will need to be called to pick up the student, as they may not be safe being in school. Janet has always been available when needed. She goes above and beyond in her job as PT. Please consider when voting to lay off Janet. Stephanie Taylor, Teacher Assistant, Oakland Beach. Is it true that we are allocated five thousand dollars for graduation through the budget, but that per the school committee, we are only being given one thousand dollars and the rest will go directly back to the schools? Katie Enos. I am a parent of a 2020 Tolgate graduate. While I am very thankful that the graduates get to have something, I am wondering if some of the detailed plans can be modified. We are able to enter Walmart, supermarket, and now retail stores and be in large crowds of people while shopping and socially distancing. Limiting the number of guests to one car makes sense, given the circumstances of the pandemic, but limiting it to two people doesn't. I'm not sure why siblings can't attend that, that live in the same household as the graduate. Would you reconsider? My wife Tabia and I have a student at Lippen School that Taylor works with. Our daughter Abigail really enjoys her time and communications with Taylor, even with the stay-at-home learning. We feel if Taylor is not at work and gets laid off, our daughter will miss out on important goals that have been set by Taylor and the other resources from the school. What we don't understand is that if a student is still learning, even though through distance, shouldn't she still have her teacher? We hope you reconsider her position, as she is a key player in this area for my daughter. We thank you for your time and hope you're well among this situation. Nicholas Peniero. Dear School Committee Members, I am deeply concerned about the plan to lay off an occupational therapist and physical therapist currently employed by Warwick Public Schools. These are unprecedented times, and many difficult decisions need to be made to create a balanced budget for the 2021 school year. However, jeopardizing the quality and quantity of federally mandated therapy services for the neediest students is not an appropriate solution. I have worked for the Warwick Schools as an occupational therapist since nineteen ninety-three. Over the years, I've had the privilege and joy of working with students who have various types of learning difficulties, physical disabilities, neurological differences, and global delays. In the past, many of these students would have attended meetings, street school, or similar out-of-district programs due to their significant diagnoses. However, because of Warwick's dedicated support staff, these children have been able to access a free and appropriate education in their neighborhood schools. Eliminating therapy positions in the 2021 school budget will affect the quality of services provided to the neediest of children. We will likely be forced to provide therapy in groups when individualized treatment is the appropriate method of service delivery. School therapists support special educators with consultation services, and our ability to do that effectively will be diminished. With an increase in the number of schools, one therapist must cover, there will be more time spent on travel and less time with students. These are just three of the many ways therapy services for Warwick's most vulnerable students will be affected by a decrease in staffing. I strongly urge you to vote against the elimination of the occupational therapist and physical therapist positions in the 2021 budget. Sincerely, Marcia Southard. I am sending this email on behalf of my husband and I. My name is Marcia Rodriguez, and our daughter's name is Haley Rodriguez. Haley is ten and is a student at Oakland Beach Elementary School. Janet Daniel, or as we all call her, Miss Janet, has been in Haley's life for eight years, and the importance she has had in Haley's life is incredible. When Haley was twelve months old, her pediatrician noticed she wasn't sitting on her own. We went to her neurologist as requested per her doctor, and the neurologist looked my husband and I in the eyes and told us we did not have a dancer or a soccer player, because she would not be walking. We weren't happy with his answer, so we got a second opinion, and after numerous tests, it came back she had low muscle tone. We did physical therapy at home, but that didn't help Haley. Haley went to drum rock at three years old, and that is where we had the pleasure of meeting Miss Janet. Miss Janet started PT with her, and that woman is a godsend. We started seeing the improvement with Haley, and she even sent us a video of Haley walking using a walker. Seeing that brought tears to our eyes, because we were seeing our baby girl walk even if she was using her walker. Miss Janet had us go talk to someone to have Haley get measured for a walker, which we did go to the appointment, but a miracle happened. On May thirteenth, twenty thirteen, Haley took her first steps at age three, almost turning four. After she started walking, Miss Janet talked to us about something she noticed with Haley's back. She was concerned that when Haley was standing straight, her shoulders were not even, so she had to schedule an appointment with Dr. Craig Eberson from University Orthopedics. Haley was diagnosed with scoliosis and has been seeing him and wearing back braces. She had surgery scheduled, was postponed because of COVID-19. I just wanted to tell you Haley's story, because Miss Janet is the reason why she is walking today. Miss Janet never gave up on her, and that is why we are grateful for her. She's been with Haley since day one. I'm pretty sure she has helped so many kids, and those parents are also grateful. So please don't let Miss Janet go. She is a huge asset to the Warwick School Department. Most of all, she is a huge asset in Haley's life and her fight. As I am writing this email, I have tears going down my face, because we need Miss Janet. Haley loves Miss Janet, and there will not be another one like her. So please, please, don't give up on these kids that she has helped. Thank you. Marcia and Stephen Rodriguez. I am writing this public comment in opposition to the proposal to cut a physical therapist position in the Warwick School Department. My son is a student at Lippen Elementary and is currently receiving PT service through the school department. PTs provide a vital role to some of the district's most needy students, which include those with multiple handicaps, global physical and mental delays, and our medically fragile population. My son fits all of these categories, and by cutting a PT position, you will most definitely be decreasing the access to the services his disability and IEP requires. Currently, there are only three PTs that cover the entire district. The proposed position to be cut already covers seven schools, leaving this workload to the two remaining PTs. It is my opinion that many students who require these services by law will not be adequately covered, and any cost savings could easily be lost to potential lawsuits or covering out-of-district expenses when parents of these students look to other districts or programs that will give the services they deserve and are required by law. We are all living through very difficult times, and these students are already falling behind with their physical development in the current distance learning environment. My family is in regular communication with our son's PT, but we cannot come close to providing the kind of care that a properly trained and experienced PT can give. There will be additional stress to this part of my child's development when schools get that session in the fall. These kids have missed very valuable hands-on work with their PTs, and there most likely will be more IP meetings and PT evaluations needed for this population, given the current circumstances. Adding this new dynamic to the current workload of our PTs will make servicing students that require physical therapy impossible. Lastly, we are all living in unprecedented times, and no one knows for sure how prolonged distance learning will impact this population of students. Cutting a PT position at this time will show a tremendous lack of vision and compassion on the part of Warwick Public Schools Administration and School Committee. It is for all of the above reasons that I strongly encourage you not to decrease the number of physical therapists in the Warwick School Department. Peta San Giovanni. Dear Dr. Thornton, Chairperson Backus, Vice Chair Copton, Mr. Cornell, Mr. Adams, and Mr. Testa. I am writing to you regarding a layoff letter that was received by one of my colleagues in the Speech Hearing Department. This layoff will result in a significant reduction in staffing for the school year 2021. Will have a profound impact on some of the most vulnerable students in our district, ages three through twenty-two. Will have moderate to severe communication disorders that impact their ability to participate, make progress in their school curriculum. In accordance with each student's IEP, on average, each of our speech-language pathologists provides direct services to twelve to eighteen students per day, over forty students per week. In addition to consulting with teachers, teacher assistants, psychologists, social workers, occupational therapists, and physical therapists about other students on our caseloads. We provide case management services, conduct screenings and evaluations, and attend team meetings with parents. Our therapy goals include improving our students' ability to listen, comprehend, interact, and communicate clearly with their peers and teachers. Some of the most basic and fundamental skills needed in order to read and write effectively, and to become competent learners in the classroom. In recent years, our district has seen an increase in the need for our services, as more and more specialized classrooms have been created to meet the needs of students diagnosed with autism and other significant disabilities that affect communication. Our students require specialized equipment, strategies, and therapeutic programming that necessitate the expertise of a speech-language pathologist for evaluation, selection, training, and ongoing implementation. While these classrooms have been created and teachers and teacher assistants hired to staff them, the number of speech-language pathologists in the district has been reduced. This school year, Warwick has one SLP for every five hundred and twenty-seven students, and we have medically fragile and severe profound classrooms. An SLP is actually assigned to technology due to RIDE mandate to Warwick, and as such, does not service students, actually making this ratio greater. Warwick's ratio is higher than Burrowville, that has one SLP for every four hundred and fifty-four students with no medically fragile programs. Princeton has one SLP for every four hundred and thirty-one students, and Central Falls has a caseload cap for SLPs of forty per SLP. Rhode Island Law encourages that caseload size be forty students per SLP. The position being cut has a caseload of fifty students with IEP spread over three schools. In fact, we are, as a department, have been so overwhelmed these past few years that anticipated vacancy for SLP was posted on school spring for the 2021 school year. Loss of my colleague's position will not be sufficiently absorbed by an already understaffed population. Speech-language therapy services for students with communication disorders are mandated by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Your decision to eliminate a speech-language pathologist position will result in language caseloads for our therapists. Bigger group sizes and consequently a reduced rate of progress for our students. Additionally, a reduction in staffing will likely cause unforeseen costs to the district, as families may utilize due process hearings in order to get access to appropriate services for their children. Furthermore, the American Speech Hearing Association, under the impact of larger caseloads, states the following about student outcomes. Students on smaller caseloads are more likely to make measurable progress on functional communication measures than those on large caseloads. Student outcomes also depend on the SLP's ability to provide services that integrate the child's curriculum. Large caseloads often limit the time available to become familiar with curriculum and standards, or other state standards across all grade levels served. Finally, in our department, we have some of the best SLPs in the state who have, up to this point, been very loyal to Warwick Public Schools and the students we service, including working many extra hours per day with teletherapy and designing appropriate materials and protocols to best service our students during this difficult time. Because of the increased workload and stress from increased caseloads this loss will cause, we could lose these talented and dedicated employees. I would also like to add the following to my letter. According to the audit by Barton Gilman, the district's special education staffing is lacking in a number of areas, including in an adequate number of speech-language pathologists. Thank you so much for your consideration of this letter. Respectfully, Natalie Potvin, Speech Language Pathologist. I am writing to support D. Recor, fellow school counselor at Warwick Veterans Memorial Middle School. I was extremely saddened to learn that she received a layoff notice, and I continue to be upset to think about losing her as a colleague. She is an invaluable part of the school community. She has a caseload of roughly three hundred students. She has an excellent relationship with her students, their parents, and also the staff at Vets. Throughout the distance learning, she is joining classrooms and continuing to connect with students, parents, and teachers. She is someone I can reach out to for help and support, and I know that I can depend on her. We have worked together on countless situations, and I know that she has done the same with other counselors and staff in the building. Sincerely, Dana Campbell-Buffley, School Counselor, Warwick Veterans Middle School. I would like to comment on the requests for layoffs of teachers for this coming September. While I am sure that there is always a need to lower spending in the Warwick Schools, I don't think the best way to do this, by reducing the essential staff who work frontline with our students. During the current uncertain and stressful times in our world, the move to have less school counselors who have service caseloads of hundreds of students just doesn't make sense. If our students are to return to school in the near future, they are going to require more support staff to help them with their adjustment, not less. Discussion on how to reopen our schools should include a plan for mental health needs for the students, which means we desperately need the counselors we already have. In addition to the loss of the multitude of work these dedicated, hard-working counselors already perform on a daily basis, both onsite and now through distance learning, most definitely have negative effects on our students. Please reconsider your potential layoffs for our school counselors and other support staff. Thank you. Kathy Parisi, School Psychologist, Veterans Middle School. Please do not move forward with the idea of laying off a librarian. As it is, we are stretched to the limit. We consciously teach conscientiously teach students all of the digital skills needed to be positive and contributing members of our society. What we do directly leads to the well-being and readiness of our students. We're the only ones teaching coding, internet safety, and research skills in a direct and focused manner. No teachers can not take on teaching another thing. The librarians have to teach these skills. In this case, we would be penny-wise and pound-foolish. Let's not be like the Red Sox, trading out the best plays to save a buck, but yet losing in the end. Let's not do that. Let's make the right choice for the kids, not for the budget. When something matters and books plus digitalism ship matter, we make room for it. This matters, and it is worth the money to do it right. Let's keep our librarians and keep the quality of education we provide elementary school children. Thank you for your time, Michelle Roth. Dear members of the Warwick School Committee, I am writing to you today in response to the recent layoff of a speech-and-language pathologist. The news that this decision came is a shock to me, given the current situation of the Warwick Speech and Language Department. We have been doing our best and working as a team to keep up with the challenges that high caseload, school coverage, case management, and overall understanding issues bring. The speech-and-language pathologist position was collectively approved in an effort to fairly distribute workload across the district and to provide our students with the quality of therapy and services they deserve. I'm asking that you carefully consider this decision and take into consideration the repercussions it will have. I have worked as a speech-language pathologist within the district for twenty-five years. During this time, I have seen caseloads grow rapidly alongside the needs of the students we serve. I've also witnessed remarkable teamwork and collaboration from my team in an effort to give the best therapy services we possibly can. As professionals, we work extremely hard to provide the best quality care for these students as our caseloads continue to grow. We are able to find a balance by working together to provide direct services in group settings, collecting ongoing data through assessments, and by attending meetings to allow us to collaborate both with parents and other professionals. If we lose this colleague, I feel it would be detrimental to the district, as well as to the students receiving speech-and-language therapy. We would lose an essential member of our team, and our students' opportunity to obtain the quality of speech therapy they deserve will be withheld from them. Carol Asher, Speech and Language Pathologist. This letter is to object to the proposition that a librarian be laid off. Librarians are virtually important to the school in fundamental ways. In addition to teaching the children library research skills, encouraging a love of literature and In addition to teaching the children library research skills, encouraging a love of literature and teaching computer science, we assist the teachers in their classroom goals by providing academic support. Our positions are already stretched thin with all of us teaching in two to three schools. To think that we would be stretched even further is unconscionable. If a position is eliminated, there will be no time to reshelf books, maintain a high quality and inviting library, and have open library. We should be adding librarian positions, not laying them off. Libraries are just about the most wonderful institution ever created, and to downgrade their potential is nothing less than tragic. Thank you for your time. Kathy Norton, Librarian at Cedar Hill, Knowett, and Robertson. The month of May is Better Speech and Hearing Month, and sadly, I am writing to you regarding the layoff that was received by one of my colleagues in the speech hearing department. This layoff will result in a significant reduction in staffing for the school year 2021, and we will have a profound impact on some of the most vulnerable students in our district. As you may know, speech-language pathologists in Warwick Public Schools work with students from the ages of three through twenty-two who have moderate to severe communication disorders that impact their ability to participate and make progress in their school curriculum. In accordance with each student's IEP, on average, each of our speech-language pathologists provides direct services to twelve to eighteen students per day. In addition to consulting with teachers and teacher assistants, psychologists, social workers, occupational therapists, and physical therapists about other students on our caseloads. We provide case management services, conduct screenings and evaluations, and attend team meetings with parents. Our goals and therapies center upon proving our students' ability to listen, comprehend, interact, and communicate clearly with their peers and teachers. Some of the most basic and fundamental skills needed in order to read and write effectively to become competent learners in the classroom. In recent years, our district has seen an increase in the need for our services as more and more specialized classrooms have been created to meet the needs of students diagnosed with autism and other significant disabilities that affect communication. Our students require specialized equipment, strategies, and therapeutic programming that necessitate the expertise of a speech-language pathologist for evaluation, selection, training, and ongoing implementation. While these classrooms have been created and teachers and teacher assistants hired to staff them, the number of speech-language pathologists in the district has been reduced. Speech-language therapy services for students with communication disorders are mandated by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. They are vital to our students' ability to reach their full potential in school and ultimately in life. Your decision to eliminate a speech-language pathologist position will result in larger caseloads for our therapists, bigger group sizes, and consequently, a reduced rate of progress for our students. Additionally, a reduction in staffing will likely cause delays for students to receive services and unforeseen costs to the district as families may utilize due process hearings in order to get access to appropriate services for their children. I ask that you very carefully consider the negative effects that cutting this position will have on our community and our children. Respectfully, Carrie Lynch Hindinger, Speech Language Pathologist. I have taught the extended school year for about fifteen years. I rely on this income. We need to let our teachers know if they will be working this summer. Just so everyone knows, because we are employed, we are not able to collect unemployment insurance, and many of us are counting on this income. Allison Dotters, Special Educative Pilgrim High School. I am writing to you regarding a layoff letter that received by one of the therapists within the Speech Language and Hearing Department. This actually is the same letter that I just read, and this one is from Heather Lindsay. She's also a speech-language pathologist. So if you want me to read the entirety again, but it's exactly the same that I just read earlier.
That's fine, Ms. Bodine. Thank you.
Okay, so.
You need a break.
From here on in, the rest of these public comments were not only sent to the public comment section of the, but they were also sent to the entire committee. So Mr. Hennessy, I'm not sure what the protocol would be if they need to be read out loud, or because they were sent directly to the committee, we could kind of stop here.
Well, public comment should have been sent through the public comment link that was provided. So if it, if an additional, or if, if, if it was not sent through the public comment link and was instead provided to the school committee members by email, then I, I don't believe it would fall within the, the, the public comment here tonight.
Actually, they were sent, they were sent to public comment, but they were also sent to each member of the school committee individually.
Here I am showing up late, and I apologize in advance, Kathy, but I think if they were, if they were put out to the public comment thing, then I think they should, they need to be read into the record.
Okay, all right. So there's, there's probably another ten?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, that's okay. I'm just gonna take a drink. Dear members of the Warwick School Committee, as you decide whether or not to vote in favor of the superintendent's recommended layoffs, I urge you to keep a few considerations in mind. First, on many occasions, the superintendent has said that the district is now right-sized. If the district is now right-sized, then there should be no elimination of positions and no resulting layoffs. More importantly, the positions that the superintendent has slated for elimination are vital to the well-being of students and should not be eliminated. Occupational therapists, physical therapists, and speech-language hearing specialists provide valuable services to hundreds of students from grades pre-K through twelve throughout the district. These services are frequently incorporated into students' IEPs, and therefore, eliminating the professionals who provide these services will eliminate the services and violate IEPs. Although the district will try to reassign the students to the remaining professionals, the caseloads will increase dramatically, and the students will be negatively impacted. Obviously, you should not lay off occupational therapists, physical therapists, and speech-language hearing specialists and leave students without services that they need and that the district is required to provide. When you consider eliminating an elementary library position, please remember that you eliminated the elementary library in last year. As a result, a number of elementary librarians have three schools this year. These librarians have had a difficult time providing the necessary library instruction services to the students. If you eliminate another elementary librarian, next year librarians may be assigned to four or more schools, which will be untenable. There is also a guidance counselor on your layoff list. As you know, the district already decimated the guidance department when it eliminated all elementary guidance counselors. Now the administration wants to cut guidance positions in the secondary level, which would be a colossal mistake due to the number of students who require the assistance of a guidance counselor. Furthermore, the elimination of positions will increase the caseloads of the remaining counselors, which will negatively impact the ability of counselors to work with all students and will violate an arbitration award that sets the number of students that a counselor can have on his or her caseload. Regarding physical education, the district should have more physical education teachers, not fewer, in order to restore physical education to a full year at the high schools. As I previously stated, superintendent himself has said that the district is now right-sized. Therefore, there should be no need for the elimination of any teaching positions or for the resulting layoffs. Please do not vote in favor of the superintendent's recommended layoffs. Thank you for your consideration, Darlene Neko, President, Warwick Teachers Union. Dear School Committee Members and Warwick Administrators, in addition to the cuts proposed to the occupational therapy and physical therapy departments, there has also been a proposed layoff in the speech therapy department. This department already has very heavy caseloads. Presently, Warwick currently has one SLP for every five hundred and twenty-seven students. In comparison, Barrowville has one for every four hundred and fifty-four, and Cranston has one for every four hundred and thirty-one students. In Central Falls, there is a caseload cap of thirty-five students per SLP, while many speech therapists here are closer to sixty students. Additionally, speech therapists here serve students with multi-handicap diagnoses, and those who are considered medically fragile that other districts do not have in their public school system. As stated in my other letters addressing the occupational therapy and physical therapy layoffs, the special education population has already been hit the hardest with regression as a result of distance learning. These students require intense hands-on services, and continued cuts to special services will only continue to hamper student progress, both in the classroom and the community. I truly hope you consider the needs of these more valuable students and reject the distressing proposal to eliminate a speech therapy position as well as the other therapist positions being proposed for layoff. Sincerely, Kimberly Vecchio. I recently received notification that my job was being considered for elimination in the new school budget. I would like to express my concern for moving the district from three physical therapists to two. I have been very happy in my position working with the students in Warwick. It has been a joy to see the students improve. Last year, I needed to have surgery, which I postponed until the school year ended. I planned my surgery and rehab to be ready to return in the fall. I did not want to miss the opportunity to work with the students so I could see them achieve their goals. When you consider my position, it goes beyond my love for the work I do and the students I work with. Budgets are very tight. I do not believe this PT position is the right place to cut expenses. During this school year, I have traveled between six schools on a regular basis and attended meetings at other buildings as needed for various issues. On most days, I visited two to three schools. If my position is eliminated, the remaining two therapists will have an impossible time getting to all the students throughout the district. It takes a minimum of half an hour to travel between schools with the equipment that is needed for physical therapy and be ready at the scheduled time for the next student. This does not even take into account snow, when there is no safe place to park at a school, traffic, accidents, or construction on the roads. Also, many of the students I work with cannot be grouped together due to extensive needs. Some students are not able to complete a task without hands-on assistance. It is also dangerous to challenge someone's balance and not be ready to help if needed. Third, with the school consolidation, buildings are very full of students learning. It can be difficult to find a safe place to work that is not disruptive to other students. A classroom that is empty for an hour that is full of desks is not a safe place to set up a balanced challenge or obstacle course. It is also difficult to pull a mat on the floor. Finding time and space to meet the needs of all students in the district with PT goals on their IEPs has been challenging for three of us. I cannot imagine if there were only two people trying to accomplish these tasks. The addition of distance learning has added new challenges to all of our lives. Typically, in the spring, there are many IP meetings. Many meetings have been postponed at the request of the parents. This will increase the number of meetings in the fall. This will be in addition to the typical start-of-school needs to help students be successful in their new schools or classrooms. Also, I have three students that were scheduled for intensive surgery this spring that had to be postponed. They will also need attention after they have surgery to help them return to school successfully. Thank you for allowing me to express my concerns. I hope you agree that eliminating a PT position would be detrimental to the students in Warwick. Sincerely, Janet Daniel. Dear School Committee Members and Warwick Administrators, thank you for the opportunity to communicate and express my concern over the proposed layoff of a physical therapy position, one of the only three PT positions in Warwick schools. As physical therapists, we treat the most vulnerable population in the district, students with multi-handicapped diagnoses, global delays, and those who are considered medically fragile. These students require one-to-one service delivery, and due to the physical handling and positioning of these students during treatment are unable to be treated in a group setting. Presently, the PT who received the proposed layoff notice covers seven schools. That leaves only two physical therapists to cover the entire district. Nineteen schools plus evaluations for the Child Outreach Program. These schools include Welk, thirteen elementary schools, two middle schools, two high schools, and the Transition Program. It would be impossible for two physical therapists to cover the travel time geographically within the district. Also, two therapists would not be able to adhere to the service time legally mandated by these students' IEPs. It is very important to note that the physical therapy caseload in Warwick has not decreased. Also, as PTs, we ensure that the accessibility needs of these unique and complex students, some of whom were brought back from Meeting Street School with the promise that services would not be compromised. These accessibility needs are guided by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and include the procurement of specialized equipment that allow the students to participate in their school day. Adaptive seating, standards, lift systems, specialized walkers, changing tables. If the physical therapy department is downsized, the PTs will not have the ability to cover these needs, which are mandated by IDEA. Finally, during these challenging times of distance learning, these students with significant special education needs have already been the most effective and have lost valuable hands-on service time. When we eventually return, there will be many evaluations and IEP meetings to make up, which will also cut into service time. Again, decreasing the physical therapy department from three to two therapists will make providing the required physical therapy services to these students with multi-handicap diagnoses impossible. We truly hope you consider the needs of these students who have complex needs and will reject this alarming proposal to eliminate a physical therapy position. Sincerely, Melissa Kelly and Joanne Mortimer, Physical Therapy Department. Dear School Committee Members and Warwick Administrators, thank you for your attention and your time. All students are entitled to a free and appropriate public education. Children with disabilities often requires specifically designed instruction of special education services to make educational progress. Many of these children cannot benefit from their special education services without additional related service support. Physical therapy is a public education-related service. If evaluation determines that school-based PT services are necessary, that student must receive those services to learn. There are nineteen schools in Warwick. The PT who received the recent proposed layoff notice delivers services to the students identified as needing a PT in seven of these schools. Without the direct intervention with students and consultive support with teachers that she provides weekly, the students at these seven schools with PT services and their individual educational plans would not have access to their special education services. Expecting the other two Warwick physical therapists to absorb her caseload would negatively impact the students with PT needs at all nineteen schools. Both learning and safety would be compromised. Please consider the needs of some of Warwick's most complex and unique learners when making decisions about eliminating a physical therapy position. Corinne Belluzzi, OT, Warwick School Department. Corinne also does one for OT as well, similar letter. Actually, same letter. Dear Chairperson, back as School Committee Members and Administrators, we are writing to request that you reconsider the layoff of a valued colleague, educator, and member of the Speech Language Hearing Department, Kayla Dupierre. Taylor is a speech-language pathologist who works with preschoolers to eighth graders at three schools in Warwick and one out of district school. She is a dedicated educator whose strengths lie in her ability to collaborate with her students' educational team and effectively carry out the responsibilities of an overwhelming caseload of students at four schools. Taylor is a professional with knowledge and expertise from an array of past clinical and educational experiences. She engages students and sustains their interest while they learn to effectively communicate, a fundamental life skill. Taylor provides direct therapy with students in addition to consulting and collaborating with teachers, families, other related service providers, and outside specialists. She is endlessly supportive of colleagues. Taylor proactively developed and shared virtual speech and language therapy techniques, lessons, tools, and platforms that our department incorporated successfully into our own distance learning teaching practices. She is a knowledgeable professional who has expertise in assistive technology such as augmentative alternative communication devices that students use daily to communicate in school and at home. Additionally, Taylor assists in bringing desperately needed funds to the district from Medicaid billing as she completes daily for the provision of therapy-based services. We respectfully urge you to reconsider the decision to eliminate Taylor's position. She is a vital therapist and educator who we are fortunate to have teach our students in our district. Without Taylor in our district next year to continue supporting our students with communication needs, it will be determined to detrimental to the students' progress and success. The negative impact of this layoff will tax an already high caseload of students supported by speech-language pathologists and will trickle down to a profound impact on services for our most vulnerable children. Jacqueline Hartley and Stephanie Egan, teachers of the deaf and hard of hearing. As a special educator teacher with the Warwick School Department for the past eleven years, I am writing on behalf of Ms. Janet Daniel, a physical therapist within the district. Yesterday, I was made aware of the intention to lay off Ms. Daniel. This news was shocking to me as well as all other professionals who work with Janet. Janet serves as some of the most vulnerable students within our district, including students in myself-contained intensive academic classroom. She is one of the most conscientious, dedicated, hard- She is one of the most conscientious, dedicated, hardworking, and knowledgeable professionals I've worked with over the years, and losing Janet would result in a huge disservice to our students, families, and professionals. Currently, the Warwick School Department employs three physical therapists. Janet covers seven schools alone, and if one therapist is eliminated, this would leave only two to cover an entire district of nineteen schools. This does not include parochial schools that are serviced as well. It is unthinkable to have only two physical therapists available to serve our most vulnerable population of students within a district of nineteen schools, not including parochial schools. Additionally, while all students have been hit with the challenge of distance learning during this recent pandemic, special education students have especially been hit hard and have lost valuable hands-on service time. Eliminating a physical therapist position leaving only two within the district would make it very difficult to provide quality services to those students most in need when returning to school could be a detrimental decision. Janet has always gone above and beyond while providing exceptional services to my students and also while consulting and collaborating with me within my classroom. She is an asset to our district and her services have positively impacted the lives of many of my students throughout the years. Ms. Daniel was a valued and dedicated professional, and eliminating her position would be devastating loss. I respectfully encourage you to reconsider Janet's layoff for the sake of the students and families you you have been elected to serve. Sincerely, Lindsay Hawn, Special Educator, Oakland Beach School. Okay, so these next three, four letters, five actually, are all exactly the same. And we have read them consistently before. I don't want to make light of them, but I will want to make, I do want to make sure that these people are recognized that they are in favor of not eliminating layoffs for the speech-language therapist. This is Sharon D. Diantano. Now she reiterates the past comments by many, many people about elimination of speech-language pathologists. This is Taylor Dupierre herself. I will read that one. My name is Taylor Dupierre, and I'm a second-year employee of the Warwick Public School System. I am a licensed certified speech-language pathologist and am one of the select few who recently received a layoff notice by the district. I am writing to you to advocate for the importance of my position within this school district. Throughout my time in Warwick schools, I have serviced students ranging in grades from preschool to twelve across six different schools. This academic year alone, I am currently servicing forty-nine students across three schools within the district and one out-of-district. My caseload consists of students with a range of disabilities, including articulation and phonological disorders, receptive and expressive language disorders, social pragmatic language disorders, fluency disorders, autism spectrum disorder, central auditory processing disorder, and multi-handicapped students with complex communication needs. I am specifically trained in the programming and implementation of augmentative alternative communication devices, which many students within our district use daily to communicate their basic wants and needs with others. On a weekly basis, I am required to not only directly service and consult with coworkers on the forty-nine students on my caseload, but also conduct and participate in special education team meetings, provide case management services, conduct screenings, administer or standardize evaluations, complete treatment notes, communicate progress with parents and guardians, submit Medicaid billing, and travel between buildings. I am extremely dedicated to my position and believe that it is reflected in the relationships I have formed over the past two years with not only students' families, but with each and every one of my coworkers. Daily, I have to group multiple students together in order to meet the services times listed in their IEPs strictly out of necessity and not based on professional preference in order to complete all of my work within the contractual school day. Unfortunately, I am not able to use my contractual non-teaching time weekly in order to be able to meet and complete my workload demands. In addition to satisfying state requirements, on average, I directly service approximately fourteen to seventeen students per day in addition to all of my work expectations listed above. The Speech and Language Department in Warwick schools consists of seventeen SLPs, including myself. As a whole, fifteen of us service approximately six hundred and seventy-five students on a weekly basis, and the other two SLPs have important roles in preschool evaluations and assistive technology. In the fall of twenty nineteen, a special education program audit was conducted within the district by Carol Brown. After that portion of the audit was completed, the Speech Language Hearing Department participated in the meeting on December fifth, twenty nineteen, where the results of the audit were shared by administration. It was found that Warwick School's Speech Language Hearing Department is considerably understaffed and underfunded with supplies to complete our jobs in a timely, ethical manner. Due to these findings, an anticipated vacancy was listed for SLP for the twenty-twenty-one school year to provide relief for my department. If my position were to be eliminated, my high caseload would have to be absorbed by my fellow SLPs who are already working their hardest at maximum capacity to meet the specific needs of Warwick special education students. According to the American Speech Language Hearing Association, students on smaller caseloads are more likely to make measurable progress on functional communication than students' ability to provide, measures those on large caseloads. Also, student outcome depends on SLP's ability to provide services that integrate a child's curriculum. Large caseloads often limit the time available to become familiar with curriculum and standards across all grade levels served. With the reduction in SLP's caseload numbers will increase and likely result in staff burnout and unforeseen costs associated with due process hearings as students face a delay or loss of services. It is our duty as related service providers to treat each and every special education student in this district with individuality. That becomes a trying task when attempting to meet all contractual expectations in addition to professional responsibilities while understaffed. SLPs have integral roles in education and are essential members of school faculties, and I hope that this has been clear throughout my message. Please consider the needs met by Warwick SLPs for our public education students and the importance of my unique role when making your decision. Thank you for your time and consideration on this important matter. Taylor Dupierre, Speech Language Pathologist. My name is Michael Green. My son Silas is a student at Warwick Early Learning Center where he receives physical and occupational therapy, and he is still followed by the speech therapist. My wife and I have been exceptionally pleased both with the quality of the therapy he receives and the progress he has made. Silas spent six months in the hospital and had three open hot surgeries before ever coming home. This has left him with a lot of challenges to battle, and the exceptional staff at WELC have truly worked wonders with him. There are two reasons for my letter. The first is to voice my appreciation and full support the truly outstanding staff at WELC. They truly love the kids, and given the current difficult situation with the pandemic, they have truly gone above and beyond the call to maintain some semblance of normalcy and continuity for these kids that are fighting such monumental battles to begin with. My spends, my son spends all week asking for and looking forward to his meeting with his occupational therapist, Marcia. The second most more important and to me really upsetting reason for my letter is that I have recently learned of layoffs of therapists in the school district. I have a very real concern that this will result in shortages of hours and a lessening of critical entitlement services. Given the already uncertain times, I think any reduction in staffing puts my son and the other students at risk of falling farther behind. These are vital entitlement services that these kids need and are guaranteed. Reducing staffing when we don't even know what September will bring is putting the students' needs at risk. If anything, you should be increasing staffing to make sure that children affected by the school closures will not be left behind. These years of early learning are truly vital in the development of their young minds, and they cannot get this time back. If they fall behind now, they will be a burden on the educational system of the city until they graduate. I implore you to reconsider and instead increase staffing to meet the ever-increasing needs of our city's students in these difficult times. My son has fought through so much already in his short four years. Please do not pile more challenges on him. At the very least, staffing should be frozen at current levels until the current crisis is over and things return to some semblance of normalcy. I appreciate your time and consideration and ask you again to please put the needs of our future citizens first and find a way to keep the staff. Michael Green. I am writing in support of Janet Daniel, Warwick Public Schools' physical therapist. For the past eight years, I have worked with Janet at Oakland Beach Elementary School, where I am a special education teacher. Over these years, I have observed Ms. Daniel demonstrate her superior skills as a physical therapist. The students in my class have benefited greatly from having her as their physical therapist. I've watched her develop and implement creative and individualized approaches to encourage and motivate students to improve their mobility skills. She perseveres until she finds the best way to support her students. Mrs. Daniel collaborates with team members to ensure that she is best supporting her students, implying their skills within various school settings and routines. Janet goes above and beyond to help her students be successful and make progress within the classroom, playground, field day activities, walking tracks, stairways, dedicated PT space, and all other school settings. Mrs. Daniel was patient, compassionate, consistent, and reliable. I have observed the strong rapport that she develops with each student. Students respond well to her methods and techniques. I have seen her inspire students to make, take independent walking steps, learn new mobility, new mobility skills, gain independence, and achieve greater levels of participation in school activities. Janet communicates effectively with her students' families and works tirelessly to support these families in meeting their children's needs. During team meetings, she clearly explains goals and progress, shares detailed updates that convey exactly what students can do, and effectively addresses all questions. She has extensive expertise and knowledge of resources available to help her students. Janet is a tremendous asset to our school system and community. She is a dedicated professional who brings about positive changes each and every day. She's a wonderful person, and I feel fortunate to call her my colleague. Cynthia Galouli, Special Educator, Oakland Beach School. I hope this communication finds you and your families healthy, safe, and secure. I am writing on behalf of Taylor Dupierre, respected speech therapist in Warwick School District, coworker and friend. I have worked with Taylor at Scott Elementary School and Winman Middle School. Taylor has proven herself to be a knowledgeable, responsible, and reliable caseworker, providing and coordinating services for her students and their families. She demonstrates creativity and a unique ability to engage with students at all levels, develop, implement, and work towards IEP goals that promote each student's meaningful participation in the school curriculum. Taylor is organized, conscientious, and thorough. She demonstrates outstanding communication skills and coordinating work with teachers, staff, and other services. Service providers to facilitate learning and student carryover strategies practiced in individual speech sessions. Taylor is an integral and important part of the Special Services Department of Warwick Schools and is responsible for IEP and evaluation team meetings in addition to screenings, evaluations, and the provisions of legally mandated service. At this point in time, the resources of the speech department are stretched incredibly thin. Therapy providers treat the most vulnerable of the Warwick City population from preschool to pre-employment. The insight and knowledge Taylor provides on a day-to-day basis is essential to the well-being of not only her caseload, but the district as a whole. The remaining therapists cannot feasibly, geographically as a group, we are responsible for covering nineteen schools, absorb her students' load to provide the service times legally mandated. The students in need in the district will suffer irreparable damages. Thank you for your consideration. Kathy Ann Ice. I'd like to take a moment of your time to express my family's gratitude and appreciation for the Warwick teachers and staff who have supported and guided us over the last decade, and especially during the last eight weeks. We have been fortunate to watch our daughters flourish through Nowood and Vets. Over her last two years at Vets, my daughter has come to form a strong relationship with Ms. Dee Recor. Having felt a level of comfort with Ms. Recor and knowing her from her time at Nowood School, my seventh grader did not hesitate to visit Ms. Recor's office when she had concerns about a friend's classmates' well-being. Not only were her concerns validated and taken seriously, but within a matter of an hour or two, Ms. Recor had contacted me to compliment Hannah on her bravery for bringing this to the attention of the appropriate adults and to assure us that her friend would be getting the help she needed. What stood out to me was how my thirteen-year-old did not hesitate to approach Ms. Recor for help, unbeknownst to me. She did this on her own, without my knowledge, with complete confidence in her guidance counselor. I remember thinking on that day how grateful I was that in the sea of twelve hundred children, my worried child knew she had a caring adult in whom she could confide. The importance of how she was met with her concerns that day cannot be overstated. This brings me to this year. Her eighth-grade year has not been an easy one for her as she struggles with a combination of mental health issues. Ms. Recor has been an indispensable resource for my daughter and our entire family during these last several months. Without her, I am relatively sure we wouldn't be getting the help we are getting today. She continues to go above and beyond for our family. As you can imagine, learning of the administration's decision to lay her off comes as an awful shock to me and our family. We believe removing Ms. Recor from the Vets faculty is detrimental to the mental health of the children she she is and will serve. I felt a security and confidence. I felt secure and confident knowing I will be sending my youngest daughter to Vets where she should now have Ms. Recor for guidance. I am disappointed in the decision of this administration to take that opportunity away from my daughter as well as hundreds of others. I respectfully ask you to reconsider. Melissa Eaton. That's it for me.
Wow. Thank you. You must be exhausted.
Some of them are very heartwarming. They're tough to read at times.
They really are. Thank you to everyone who wrote in. At this time, we move to C, letter C. School Committee Correspondent Donation Announcements. We received a gift, a gift of a violin, a viola, and a guitar from Jane Littoro. The viola will go to Winman Junior High School, and the violin and guitar will go to Vets Junior High School. She sent these, provided these in memory of Marilyn Barney. And we are very appreciative of those donations and we want to thank you very much for donating them. The second correspondence comes from Sloan Sheridan Thomas. Now Sloan Sheridan Thomas has been donating to the district for school lunches since, I think, June of twenty nineteen. And has donated a thousand dollars since then, providing one hundred dollars a month. And she wrote to Superintendent and said, Dear Superintendent Thornton, I simply wanted to let you know that I am discontinuing my monthly donation to the school lunch program. I pledged to do this for one year, but I am stopping two months shy of that because I've decided to donate the money locally to help my community. Thank you for all you do for so many. You make a difference. Respectfully, Sloan Sheridan Thomas. And Sloan, thank you very much. You have been incredibly generous. You certainly made a difference and make a difference for many students in Warwick, and I'm sure you will continue to do so for your own community. Thank you. Moving on to D. Approval of minutes of public session. I move approval for April sixth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five zero. Move approval of minutes of public session for April twenty-third, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five zero. Move approval of the April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty minutes of public session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five zero. And approval of minutes of public session for April twenty-nine, twenty twenty.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five zero. B, approval of warrants for May twelfth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five zero. Moving on to letter E, announcements, personnel as presented. A, layoffs of certified teachers as presented. Mrs. Regeri, is that you?
I think me, Madam Chair. I can start off and I'll probably pull in Mr. Regeri. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, as you know, last week, we submitted a budget to the city for eight point two million dollars. Uh, as you also know, we spent several meetings looking at appendix A, supplies, materials, that kind of thing, to find ways to save money. As you also know, we're not going to balance the budget on an appendix A. Most of our budget, over eighty percent, is staffing and benefits. So that brings us here tonight as one of your benchmarks or options. Part of my job as Superintendent is to give you options, and this is one of those occasions. Prior to June one, you do have the opportunity to do layoffs for the W T U. And tonight I have a sheet in your packet. It's identified as twenty twenty-one proposed staffing reductions. It's in three groups, if you will. In the first group, we're calling them enrollment efficiencies. Essentially, you're seeing a lot of reductions there. Um, also a lot of additions in the scheduling. It's essentially where the kids landed in the schedules, be it a grade-two classroom, be it a phys ed classroom. So at the end of the shuffling of the, you are seeing a recommendation from from myself to reduce phys ed number of phys ed sessions or classes has to get his head, but the need less, thus the phys ed reduction recommendation. Also in this first section, current tech, you see a point five reduction. That would also be in that category of efficiency where we have less, less enrollment, and Ms. McCaffrey can certainly speak to that after I finish. The middle category, you see guidance identified. Essentially around the nation, you see two benchmarks for guidance for some ratios of students to a guidance counselor. It's around two hundred and fifty to three hundred. If we were to reduce, and Ms. Danbrook has the actual numbers, would be around two sixty, two sixty-one with our ratios. We're well within the ratio if we reduce. If we don't reduce, we're even lower. So once again, eight point two million dollars, we have to look at these and make tough decisions. And I would say if we don't, you know, do these tough decisions now in May, we're certainly doing them in June. And in June, we lose opportunity past the June one deadline for this group anyway. The last category, I called it the hard choice cuts. These, as you heard from testimony, are very, very difficult decisions to make. But at the end, you know, we have to balance our budget and come down by eight point two million dollars. So I don't offer this last section lightly as they're all very difficult, but we have to find ways to lower the budget and thus I give you those, those numbers. So as I mentioned, Ms. Danbrook, Mr. McCaffrey, Ms. Regeri, so online for this conversation. So we're all happy to answer any questions you have on us.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I, I do.
Mr. Tesco?
Good evening. Thank you. Dr. Thornton, we're, we're, we vote on this slate in its entirety?
No, you could certainly pick any ones out you want to vote up or down. And, uh, Mr. Hennius can certainly back me up on that, but you would select off this any, any or all or none.
That's correct.
So theoretically, you could, theoretically, we could say hard choice stay, fiscal diligence stay, enrollment efficiencies are fine.
Yes, you could.
Okay. Okay. I just have to, I have to, I have to say publicly that I have a problem with this and, and I have a problem with this because to me, this is cause and effect. This, the reason for this list is that we're going into the city with eight and a half or eight point whatever million dollars. That's the cause of this. So the fact that on a net basis here, you're looking at five to six positions, I think just buttresses the point when you say that the district is, is pretty right-sized. And I think it also reinforces the point you made a couple of times last week and the week before that any particular type of layoff would be a bad choice. And I think that what we're seeing here, and I have to say, this is a failure. This is the result of a failure of what we, we weren't willing to do. So as you said, we're not going to get there in the supplies and materials in the appendix A. We're not going to get there by seeing if we can get a Chromebook for nine dollars cheaper. We're not going to get there to look, by looking to see if we can find free, some free P D on YouTube. We, whatever this committee decides on this, my prediction is, and I hate to even make it, that it's going to pale to the decisions we're going to be making in June, July. So that, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Tesco. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Corno?
Yeah, so a lot of these positions that are suggested be cut, like I have a big problem with many of them because they're essential positions like occupational therapist, physical therapist, speech language pathologist, like those are essential for I T students. And to cut those positions would be disastrous for departments and most importantly, the students. So I'm not in favor of that. Also, like cutting in more guidance, like we don't need that. Like we're already having issued there as it is, even librarians, like we cut librarians to extent, like we've cut assistant personnel, we've cut books. It's just a lot of positions, like this is going to really hurt us if we accept that is. I would be very much against a lot of these suggesting cutting. It's going to really hurt us and our students.
Anything further, Mr. Corno?
No, that's, that, um, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
As far as these, I understand the budget. I understand the deficit we have. But I also understand how short-sighted we are sometimes about in the past, cutting these types of help for our kids. And personally, what I've seen in the past few years is a child not getting a speech therapist because we didn't have one and he missed a whole year of no speech. And that was the child's problem. And so he didn't get help for that one problem. And I, I just can't, I can't cut these, I cannot cut a library person. I can't cut the guidance. I can't cut the P T. I can't cut the occupational therapy or speech therapy. I just can't do it. We're going to have to find the money elsewhere. This is, this is essential to a lot of, a lot of kids would need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Copton. Anyone else like to speak on this?
Madam Chair, I have another question on, on the sheet that was presented.
Mr. Tesco, just give me a minute.
Sure.
Would anyone else like to speak on this? Thank you, Mr. Tesco.
Thank you. Dr. Thornton, on, on the spreadsheet that you gave us, where you break it out into three enrollment efficiencies, fiscal diligence and hard, hard choice cut. The, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. The enrollment efficiency is essentially how many positions? One full, one F T E?
Yes, the efficiencies would be the phys ed, point five and the C T C piece, fifty percent, so one point oh total.
Right, okay. So it's one and then the fiscal diligence is one and a half, right?
I see diligence at the, at the one, at the guidance and like I said, Ms. Danbrook has the act-
I'm sorry, it's a one, yes, okay. Okay. All right, no, I just, I just needed some clarification on, on exactly how that was broken out. So, sure. Thank you.
Is there anything further from anyone? Just, um, having watched this school system over the past twenty years and especially over the the past twelve, I watched more public schools lose five percent of their funding due to the Teresa Bible Lead Bill. That was never recouped. We were the only district in the state that was cut by the maximum percent allowed. And it was never restored. That was under the Abidinian administration. And for every year thereafter, up until recently, the district has been level funded. It was level funded. And each year we had to get rid of good things for kids. We lost the special program for kids that would help enrich them and teach them about things that they don't usually get in the classroom. We have lost lots and lots of personnel, guidance counselors, librarians, teachers. We've downsized and now we, we stand with an original budget ask of over twelve million that the superintendent brought to us is eleven point nine, I believe, that we have now gotten back, that we've now gotten down to about eight million, knowing that the city doesn't have the money, praying that the feds will come through and not make states declare bankruptcy. Covid in the middle of this has, has really hurt many, many schools, programs, businesses, et cetera. I don't have to tell you that. You all know what we're all living in. But if we hadn't been cut that five percent or if it had been restored and if we had been given one million dollars each year, we would not be in the position we are in today. Because now we're where the rubber meets the road. And I don't know how it's going to be resolved. From the sounds of it, just like the rest of you, these are, these are necessary positions. You can't have in, in in a city school system, the size of Woke, having two physical therapists would be awful. And very unfair to the two that are left. And the same goes for everything else. The superintendent notes the guidelines for guidance counselors, but actually in an arbitration that we lost, it was two hundred and fifty students, max, for one guidance counselor. I think that may have been before you, Superintendent. So we don't have enough positions to cut. We don't have enough stuff to cut. I believe with everything I know, everything I believe, I believe that if this city doesn't put education first and help us rebuild and build our schools to what they can be, then the city will continue to spiral downwards. We go out every day and we see businesses shuttered, and this is before COVID. Now it's just gotten worse. As the schools go, so go those cities and towns. And East Greenwich and North Kingston and many other districts are an example of that. But I don't know what the answer is going to be. So, Mr. Hennius, I have to ask you, how do we vote on these? Do we vote on these? Mr. Hennius?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
We missed you.
I was trying to print out the list of the seven people. I'm sorry. What's up?
I understand. Um, how do we handle that? I keep getting these pop-ups. How, how, not, not how we, how do we handle the layoffs?
Given that they've been proposed to you and I've got the, I just was able to pull the document up since I couldn't print it, they're numbered one through seven. I would suggest someone make a motion to, to, again, whether it's approve or if, if you're going to piecemeal them, approve layoffs one, three, five and seven. Um, and to deny, you know, just go, I would go by the numbers at this point as they're listed.
Okay. May I have a motion on number one, please?
Madam Chair, what, you're asking for a motion to what?
Because we can't name the person.
No, I understood. So what, what's, is the motion to lay off or the motion to not lay off or it's our choice?
It's your choice.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I was just, I wanted some clarity. Thank you.
No problem. Glad to provide it.
Madam Chair, I move to deny this layoff.
Pardon me?
I, I move to deny this layoff.
Number one?
Yes.
Motion on the table to deny layoff number one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Tesco?
Oh, that was, I agree, not, not to let that one go.
Okay. So that's five zero.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion that, that we, we do not grant two through seven? So we have to do one at a time?
That's fine. Yeah.
And make a motion that we do not grant, we do not approve.
We don't approve layoffs for
2 through 7.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for proposed layoff of number 2 through 7 is no layoffs. So there are, there will be no layoffs for 1 through 7, there will be no layoffs of any of those positions, is that correct?
Sounds it.
That's how I understand it.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was 5-0.
Madam Chair, moving on?
Who said that?
Superintendent here?
Oh, Superintendent, yes, please.
Moving on to retirements, resignations.
Yes.
Retirement, so we have several. We have Sharon Miller, recently passed, as you know, 44 years, elementary teacher, grade 2 Wyman. Lisa Augen- Lisa Augustin, 30 years, science teacher, veterans.
Thank you.
Diane Mello, 21 years, elementary teacher, grade 3 Oakland Beach.
Thank you, Ms. Mello.
Anita Boyd, elementary teacher, grade 4 Robertson, with 30 years of service.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Catherine Quinn, elementary PE teacher, Cedar Hill, 33 years of service.
Wow, thank you, Ms. Quinn.
Linda Cunningham, elementary teacher, grade 2 Greenwood, 36 years of service.
Wow, she's got her own kids and nephews, thank you, Ms. Quinn.
Nancy Wall, math interventionist, Lipit Warwick, next, 41 years of service.
Wow, I think she wins. Thank you.
Denise Bilidu, coordinator of tech applications and assessments, 14 years of service.
Thank you, Denise.
Robert Acosta, carpenter, maintenance mechanic, maintenance department, 30 years of service.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta.
And lastly, Susan Towell, teacher assistant, CO-Talk, grade 2 Park, 26 years of service. So Madam Chair, please, if I get a motion to accept the retirements.
Move acceptance of the retirements?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I savit. Thank you all for your service and all that you gave to this district. We wish you well in retirement.
For what it's worth, Madam Chair, that's
Wait, wait, wait.
For what it's worth, that's 308 years of service, if anyone was keeping track.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. Superintendent, did you want to say something?
No, Madam Chair, we have one resignation when you're, when you're ready.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
One resignation, Mary DeSanto, social studies, grade 6 Winman, with 20 years of service. And you have a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have
Nate, all in favor on that?
Aye, yep.
You're the only one, David.
Everybody else say aye.
You and me, yeah. Ms. Copton?
Aye.
Mr. Cornell?
Aye.
Mr. Adams?
I just came back from the restroom, I don't know what we're talking about.
Oh. We're letting somebody resign, Mr. Adams.
Okay.
Mary DeSanto, 20 years. Good luck to her. Thank you, Superintendent.
Madam Chair, one unrestricted leave of absence.
Okay.
Carolyn Higgins, science teacher, Winman.
Move approval?
All in favor?
Second.
Wait, oh, move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
And Madam Chair, lastly, appointments, just reporting these out to you. We have three appointments. First one, Ellen Tedeschi Moran, Moran, teacher assistant, SES at Winman. Next, we have Kim Regery, human resources manager. And lastly, Julie Martin, WELC coordinator. I'd like to welcome all three to the district in positions.
Welcome, Kim. Your new position, you've been in the district for a while, you have lots of great experience.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question for the superintendent.
Does it pertain to personnel as presented?
Yes, it does.
Go ahead, please.
Dr. Thornton, the WELC coordinator, is that, for lack of a better word, the WELC principal?
Yes, it, it's the, the lead personnel at WELC.
Okay. All right, well, we're calling it a coordinator.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, that's a layoff.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Madam Chair, a personnel question?
Mr. Cornell?
So, um, so I know it won't be going over tonight, but then will we be reviewing the contracts of these individuals? Will that be at another meeting?
Huh?
Just, we, we don't want that ratified contracts for administrators. When would that?
We did that, Mr. Cornell.
Okay.
Mr. Cornell, give me a call tomorrow or later on, we can talk.
Okay.
All right. I'll catch you up on it. Thank you. Uh, moving on, F, adoption of policies, Dr. Cecil.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
First, these are all first reads tonight. The first policy we have up is JE student attendance. This is language that we've taken from the student code of conduct and inserted it into the actual policy. If you look at the documents that we posted, the first paragraph is what the actual policy read. It was very simple, it was, it didn't have any real depth to it. And so we took the language from the student code of conduct and along with recommendations from Aubrey, from Andrew Hennius's office, and inserted the language that's all underlined. And so you can, you know, obviously read it for yourself, but it just details absenteeism, what, what the definitions are of chronic absenteeism, what extended, you know, definitions of extended absence, chronic absence, what the school day, how we define the school day, things of that nature. So it just makes this a much more comprehensive policy on student attendance. So we're requesting approval of a first read.
Thank you. Okay, um, we usually read first read, correct?
We can, if you want, it's not necessary, if we've discussed what the changes are, because this is not a brand-new policy.
Okay.
Changes to an existing policy.
Okay, so at this time, are there any, I move approval?
Second.
Second. Question, Madam Chair?
Discussion? Mr. Testa?
Just a quick question. Dr. Cecil, all of the underlying stuff is new, right?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because that's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm it, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this?
Madam Chair, it's just, I, I don't think we vote on first readings, I don't think that's been a practice.
Pardon?
First readings, like, I don't think we vote on first readings, just the second one.
You do have to vote for first readings.
We do vote.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We do vote, we vote, we, there has to be two votes, though, for it to take effect.
Okay, thank you for your explanation.
Thank you. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, I savit, 5-0. Thank you. Dr. Cecil?
We'll bring that back next meeting. The next policy up for a first read is JEDB. It was originally called Student Dismissal Precautions, and now we're just calling it, wording it Student Early Dismissal. This was brought to our attention by Ms. Danbrook with the need for new language about how the procedures for students to be checked out early from schools, both at the elementary level and the secondary level. And so once again, our original policy was very general and did not have a lot of depth to it. So all the new language is underlined, includes things like having to show a photo ID. The parent has to come into the office. That they should provide written notice if they go ahead of time, that the student is going to leave school early. That the parent needs to come into the building at the elementary level, at both levels, to sign the student out. Unless the student is 18 years of age, they may sign themselves out. And that's really it. So it's, and so it's really just detailing the procedures for students leaving school early. And this has all been reviewed by Mr. Hennius, and we're, we're good to go with that, so requesting approval of this first read.
And this policy is much more detailed because we were looking at safety issues. Stan Brooke, did you want to address anything in this policy? Because I know you brought it to the committee.
Yes, so the previous policy was very vague. Times have changed since that policy was written, and we have had some difficulties with parents being very upset over secretaries and principals asking for identification if they do not know a parent, and they don't want to release a child to somebody they don't know. So we want to make it clear that it is a policy.
Thank you, Mr. Dan. Is there any other discussion? There being none? Call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
I move approval?
We already did that.
Did we?
No, we already did that.
Oh.
We were in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you.
Okay, our last policy up for first read is Policy JGD, Student Suspension. This was updated because of changes in regulations by RIDE. So the new language, although there's not very much new language, the new language is underlined that relates to what the guidelines of what schools can and cannot do as it relates to student suspensions. Mr. Hennius has reviewed this and has approved it, for us to move ahead for first read.
I move approval on JGD, Student Suspension, First Reading?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion on this?
One question, Madam Chair?
Certainly, Mr. Dan.
On page 3, it, there was a, we had a social privilege suspension, and that's been stricken. So is that totally not in the policy anymore, or has that been reworded?
That is not in the policy anymore, it's no longer allowed by RIDE.
Okay. Thank you.
Everything in there reflects what RIDE now allows. Any further discussion, questions? Anyone? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cecil. Love that. Love your background. Item G, New Business, Discussion Action, Bid Award, Health and Dental Insurance, Mr. Ferrucci.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, Dr. Thornton, fellow colleagues. We have before you a document with regards to the most recent bid that we worked with the city on, on seeking competitive prices for our health and dental program. For the past five years, the school department has worked with the city of Warwick in securing medical and dental insurance through a quote-bid process. For the first four years, a company by the name of Hill Group was the employee benefits consulting group who administered the previous bids. This past year, the city moved with Marsh McClellan Agency out of New York City to facilitate the process. This year, for the fifth time, the consultants came up with the same recommendation, and that is to continue with WB Health, working with the collaborative with 20 other communities in administering our self-insurance program. The one point that I want to bring out that was mentioned in the report, they recommend a one-year contract, but they also recommend that beginning next year, we seek a three-year bid award, because as Dave has stated, that the annual basis of going out and trying to seek premiums based on a self-insured type program ultimately diminishes market value of a program in the long run. We've had extremely good success with WB Health over the last 20 years that we participated in the collaborative. And most importantly, the current plan design is not changed. So everything that we've had is going to continue. And so I wholeheartedly support their recommendation, and that is to continue our contract with WB Health next year, and then to go out for a three-year bid award in the spring of 2021. Happy to answer any questions. You have their full report attached to your documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrucci. In reviewing the document, I was wondering, does WB allow for multi-year
Absolutely. Absolutely. In typical fashion, we were doing three-year bid increments with them up until the most recent period of the last five years. We actually bid it with the option going three, but the city's always exercised the option to go back out to bid on an annual basis. So I hope the city will take the advice of the company. They're spending money on these assessments every year. I think it's worthwhile to go on a three-year window.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrucci. I move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Chair, I have a thank you. Mr. Ferrucci, thank you. I just want to, I have, I think I have a question and a statement, because historically, the school committee and school department has been chided by the, by the city on, on our healthcare plan. And I remember, I think it was last year, where there was a movement to make a switch, because there would have been like a, a, a quick, fast hit of a savings, and then over the long term, it would have just, it would have cost us more money. And with the trust there were the exit fees, which is what I call them, so you're going to pay to get out. And I remember that they, those two gentlemen coming and saying, that's not really how, how it acts, but if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. So I have no problem. I think WB has proven to be a good provider for us and a good source. I think locking up a three-year deal is, is is a good thing, because it, it tends to to level out your spikes. And so this year, what, what's, what's the increase this year? We, we're going to all see an increase in premiums?
7% is what's targeted for July 1st. What has been an interesting turn, and I'm not sure which way it's going to go, but because of the lack of demand for medical procedures for the last four months, that our claim history for the last three months is going dramatically down, which makes sense. If they're not doing any of the ancillary services in hospitals, that we won't have claims. So people aren't going to the doctors regularly unless they're really sick, et cetera, because of the COVID issue. So we may have a windfall this year that might turn into a result for helping us next year. Won't know that until the end of June. The converse of that, of course, is now you've got pent-up services. The converse of that, of course, is now you've got pent-up services coming up July. All of the medical procedures that folks have delayed because they didn't want to go into the hospital and possibly get exposed to the coronavirus, they will now all go for those services. So, we may actually see a big spike next year. So, it's going to be interesting to see how it plays out. But because we're with WB, the surplus that we might generate this year will offset that spike next year. And that's the reason why you stay long-term in a self-insured pool like this.
Right, I agree. Anybody who was going to have something done and couldn't do it now because either the facility wasn't providing it or they were reticent, that's going to change. They're going to get that procedure done anyway. So, I agree. And then the last thing I'll say is, I'll be self-admittedly smarmy here. The premium's going up, but not everybody's sharing in that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. Anyone else? Discussion? Anyone else? There being none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, on the New Business G. Discussion Action Authorized Bond Funding Expenditures. Mr. Gothberg, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Committee members, colleagues. First up are two roofing projects that were put out to bid and brought before the Building Committee first on April 2nd. When we brought it to the Building Committee on April 2nd, there was a lower bidder than either of these. And after a serious scope review, we determined that that bidder, RNH, had not covered a lot of the HVAC work that needed to be done on top of the roof to replace the actual roofing membrane. So, after they decided withdrew on April 2nd, I brought commercial roofing. It says here, "Commercial Electric," but it's commercial roofing. And Greenwood Industries as the low bidder is commercial roofing for Lipit and Greenwood Industries for Robertson. Building Committee did approve those. But after a quick review after, I realized that I had not brought forward the two addendums for each project. And once we brought the two addendums into the mix, Greenwood Industries is not low anymore. So, on May 5th, I requested to bring it back to the Building Committee. And they approved unanimously, commercial roofing to do Lipit for $930,000 and Auburn Construction to do Robertson Elementary at $760,000. Robertson is under budget. Lipit is over budget, but it is well within the contingency factor. So, they are within the bond funds for these projects. So, I put them before you for consideration and approval.
I move approval on the bid award re-roofing of Lipit and Robertson.
Second.
Discussion. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I just have one thing for Mr. Gothberg.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I think you said it at the last meeting or the meeting before you last presented something, what a difference a year makes. And it's, you know, one of the few bright spots is all these projects that we're going out to bid for now are coming in below what our estimates were. And again, I think I mentioned there are people out in the community who think we do this with voodoo and magic sticks and stuff. But it is professionally done. And we're just reaping the advantage of a very, very bad market right now, which benefits the taxpayers because we're not spending $1,004,000 for spending $930,000, say.
When we had looked at Lipit originally and looked at the budget and then realized that we didn't, we really didn't think the HVAC was going to be covered. We had thought we were going to be $250,000 short on this project. And we only ended up being $39,000 short for the original budget. It's still within contingency. So, yeah, really, what a difference a year makes. You are correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. Thank you, Mr. Gothberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it five zero. Next award is B, Bid Award Seven Fire Alarm Projects.
Hello again. So, yes, we have seven fire alarm projects that were presented to the Building Committee on May 5th and were approved unanimously. I'll go through them quickly. Auburn Construction won Hoxsey Elementary at $117,000 and Drum Rock at $83,000. Commercial Electric won was low bid on Lipit at $119,499. Park Elementary at $92,201. Welk at 101,021. And Greenwood Elementary at 103,090. And Sheridan Electric won Sherman Electric at $122,000 even. There is only one that is slightly over budget by $1,500. And that's well within the contingency factor. So, they're all really at or below our budget numbers. So, I put them before you for consideration and approval.
Why is one over?
Just the way it worked out.
Alrighty, I move approval.
Second.
Discussion. Is there any discussion? There being none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it five zero. Moving along, Mr. Gothberg.
Okay, this one's a small change order for the Lipit Playground project that's going on right now. I presented it to the Building Committee again on May 5th. The change order is for $1,477.18. What it's for is the seesaw there, that's part of the existing playground, was slated to be repaired, just some seat backs that needed to be replaced. However, when they took a look at it a little closer when they got there on site, what had been missed was the torsion spring that keeps the seesaw level. So, it doesn't come down and slam down when somebody gets off and go onto the new port and place rubber that we're going to put in. It needed to be replaced. So, they have to strip it all down, replace the components, put it back together. And the cost is $1,477.18. And I put it for you for approval.
Thank you. So, they don't come down like they used to when we were kids?
No, they don't slam down on your toes anymore. At least not as hard, anyway.
Well, thank goodness for that. I move approval.
Second.
Discussion. There being none? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it five zero. Number three, Discussion Action Building Committee Recommendation Reassignment of HVAC Project to Winman.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrucci.
We have a document before you that articulates what's transpired for the last three to four months with the Building Committee. We reflect back to the issue that we had at Winman. We had a heating system go. And around December, January, we came to the School Committee with a recommendation for repairing it. Originally, we were looking at about a half a million dollar fix. And we said we were going to fix it for about $150,000. It'll tide us over for the short term. But that prompted the Building Committee to look at Winman and investigate why that, being the newest building in the community, why that heating system had not been identified as being replaced early on in our assessment process. And the decision was that because it was one of the newer buildings, it could be delayed a few years. And of course, the heating system breaking down proved us otherwise. So, we started looking at the high school and the whole high school conversation with the consultant coming in. And we realized that we have an HVAC system in the bond referendum that was approved by the voters of the $40 million for close to $9 million at Pilgrim High School. So, the Building Committee went out and actually did physical walkthroughs of Winman and Pilgrim. And we had our architects review the systems. And we've been identified that we've actually had some major components in the Pilgrim system get changed in the early 90s. So, it's about 30 years old. And the decision that we've come to is that the Winman Heating System is more critical than the Pilgrim Heating System. And so, we're here this evening to let you know that our recommendation is to reconsider the $9 million that was targeted to Pilgrim to be reassigned to Winman. We have reached out to the Rhode Island Department of Education because they've already approved our housing aid based on the Pilgrim project. But they're supportive of having the approval get moved to the Winman Middle School. They do realize it's more critical. We have to go back before another bond. I know we've got the high school issue out on the table. And so, either we're going to be looking at significant investments in our high schools in the next couple of years, which then would be, it's not a good investment to fix the heating system if we're going to do something totally dramatically different at Pilgrim. So, this will buy us the time to figure out what to do with the high schools. So, we may be putting up a new building. We may be doing some serious renovations. Or we may be doing more patching or repairing. Either way, the Pilgrim Facility, we believe, will be okay for the next two to three years. We're very concerned that we're going to have more heating failures at Winman. And so, the question that I need to bring before the committee, and maybe it's an assistance with Mr. Hennessy, is since the voters voted on a $40 million bond with so much money being targeted to Pilgrim, what would be the proper steps if we decide that we want to go to those funds to Winman Middle School? Like I said, we've already did the research for RIDE. RIDE will support the project shift. So, we're asking you this evening to support our recommendation and then do whatever legwork necessary to make that happen over the next six months to a year. But we would like to be able to put in the A and E for Winman Heating, January 2021. So, if there's something that has to happen over the next six or eight months, we have time to have that. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Hennessy?
Definitely want to take a look at exactly how the bond was written to determine what, how we would deal with the shift in funds. It may not be problematic at all, but we'd have to see that.
So, Mr. Ferrucci, can you get that information to Mr. Hennessy for his review? And we'll take it up at the next meeting?
That's, we've got plenty of lead time. That's why I wanted to start the process this evening. And yes, we'd be happy to work with Mr. Hennessy and work that last legal piece. And then maybe we can move forward, you know, sometime over the summer. So, thank you. Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Hennessy.
Please, Mr. Testa, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Hennessy, if... The bond, I don't think was so granular as to say this project, that project. I think when we presented to the city, we said, here is a list of projects. And they approved that. So, the bond was like the 100,000-foot level. So, my hope here is that if anything, we may just need the city council to say, yeah, it's okay. As opposed to some big, long legal thing. It would seem to be pretty innocuous to me.
My assumption would be that's correct. I just want to verify it before I give you, you know.
Got you. Thank you.
We want to be safe. Not sorry.
And, Mr. Testa, I want us to be extremely transparent to the community. We've made assurances that when we provided them information as to the investments we were going to be making into our schools, we were going to do it wisely, we were going to do it efficiently. And we're going to be doing it transparently, which is the reason why I'm raising the issue tonight. Because what we want to acknowledge is that we spent over $150,000 of a consultant to assess our high schools. And we do not want to invest money in a building that is going to be dramatically revamped and/or replaced two years from now and waste $9 million of taxpayer dollars. We want to invest it properly, but we want them to be aware of it. And so, that we can all work collaboratively together to execute what's best for the city. So, that's why I appreciate the opportunity to get this communication out publicly tonight. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. If anybody's got any questions, they can email me. So, thank you.
Mr. Ferrucci, that should come in much lower than Pilgrim, correct?
Yes.
It's a much smaller building.
Yes.
Okay, good. Moving right along, number four, Discussion Action. FY 2020 Monthly Fiscal Report, Mr. Ferrucci.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have in your packet this evening our typical monthly report. And we're showing that our expenditures year-to-date on our non-staffing, which includes our purchase orders, are in excess of our budget. We've spent 102% of the $30 million that was our revised budget as of March. The most significant item that's driving that is our special ed out of district. And in the report, you can see that there's open purchase orders that have that particular line, about $1.2 million, over budget. We had in excess of 20, close to 20 students get identified between the months of tail end of January and going into the month of March. We've been told that as long as the virtual services are being provided to our special ed students that are out of district, that we are required to continue to pay for the full amount of the tuition. So, what I had the business office put together for us is a compilation of the open purchase orders. Because we actually are not incurring costs in some areas because the schools are closed, specifically transportation. So, you have a full roster of the open POs and some comments that we may be guiding those open POs and the opportunities that we would expect not to have to pay bills. So, I fully expect us to be able to come under budget, not over budget. Could be in the neighborhood of a couple of million dollars. We will know what transpires over the next month or so. And you'll hear some purchasing that'll take place. And what we're doing is because the schools are closed, that we will be buying materials early because we're going to start working on the buildings early. So, we may be going over budget in some categories, but we will be able to have a balanced budget by the end of the year. So, I've given you that details. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on it. One other point I do want to make out is that the heating and the diesel fuel, there are open POs, there is some backlog in billing that they haven't been staying current. So, we're going to be getting some of that in. We're going to have some savings in those accounts, but not to the amount the open POs are. But I'm also happy to announce that we did do the price lock that the School Committee gave us authority on. And that we've already built in the savings in next year's budget. But the diesel price that we locked in at was $1.57 a gallon. And now, heating oil is $1.68. So, I think we did a fantastic job. I want to thank Ms. Donna Higgins and Kevin for their efforts in securing that excellent low pricing for us. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion? Ms. Copton? Testa?
No, I don't have any questions. I was just looking over the PO sheet, but everything makes sense to me.
I agree.
Okay. Mr. Ferrucci, having had a number of conversations with city officials, anything that is... That stays in the budget, please make a note of it. Because we do have to have a conversation with the city about any overages. And you know that we're very short for next year. And we don't know how we're going to solve that Rubik's Cube. In fact, the Rubik's Cube is probably easier to solve than our budget was.
Ms. Baggers, I'm just hopeful that the revenue projections that we have in our budget... That the revenue projections that we have in our budget will be sustained. And I think we can then have a conversation in early June about how the that might benefit the community. Um but I am a little skittish that the revenue figures may not come through to fruition, so I just do hope. That does come through and we'll have a different conversation. So I'll keep you apprised as we move along. But thank you.
Thank you. That makes a lot of us. Number five, discussion action contract award Aramac. School lunch renewal. Mr. Fruci.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we go through a process of renewing the school lunch contract that's required. Um we do do a every five years go out to bid. And get a five-year commitment to a co- to a vendor. Right now it is Aramoc. Um but within that bidding process is an annual review of the lunch budget. Typically, they would come out and and tell you about the food program, et cetera. Um so they like provided you a copy of the template of their renewal contract. It's the same type of document we've been doing for the last three years. Um I'm happy to report that the school lunch depot is working very well. Um they've stepped up to the plate and our community is being served both at the three sites as well as being delivered on buses. Well, I think we're all very happy and satisfied with Aramoc. And so we're asking that you extend the contract for the year so that they can make their staffing plans accordingly, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I move approval.
Second.
Discussion. There any discussion on this? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I just have it five zero. Thank you. Number six, discussion action, contract award Mutual Link Annual Renewal. Uh we are. The State House. Uh Speaker wants to emulate. Uh the Mutual Link system in Walworth throughout the entire state. So we have a feather in our cap for something. Mr. Farucci.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um as it indicates, um it's a renewal of the Mutual Link program that we're running for the safety of our students. Forty four thousand six hundred dollars. This goes into effect July first. And it is in your adopted recommended budget as we speak, so we seek your approval.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Tester.
Thank you. Uh it it's it's nice to know that the state uh wants to um join Mutual Link. School committee, past school committees caught caught quite a bit of criticism from some people in the community about uh signing on to Mutual Link. Um pretty. Pretty hot criticism too. I thought they were wrong then and they're wrong today. But um. Since we're what I would call an early adopter of this, maybe this is with Dr. Thornton. Um we should try to use our leverage as an early adopter. For if they roll out Mutual Link two point oh or two point two, we should we should leverage the fact that. We jumped in early with them to try to get some stuff. For free.
Had the conversation.
Okay, we we already spoke with them.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was there a motion in second?
Excuse me?
Um what was there a motion that?
Is there a motion? I thought there was a.
I thought you made the motion, Madam Chair.
I did make the motion. I thought you seconded. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was.
Yep.
So five in favor, zero dissent. Thank you. Uh we're going to hold number seven until next month. Number eight, discussion action contract award buildings and grounds disinfecting sanitizing equipment and supplies. Good evening, Mr. Oliver.
Good evening. I come before you this evening to ask uh your approval of this contract award for uh. Sanitizing supplies uh and and equipment. Um if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I move approval.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have two questions. I think one for Mr. Oliver and maybe one for Mr. Fruci, not sure. Or maybe Ms. Higgins, I don't know. Um, Mr. Oliver, the the electrostatic devices, are those like the um the guns?
Yes.
So it would spray down hard surface areas with disinfectant?
Correct. It it makes it a more efficient clean. You could be able to do an entire classroom in a matter of minutes.
Okay, and then um. For any of you, um these COVID-related purchases, and I've asked this before and forgive me, I just don't remember. Are we somehow coding these internally in our system? That they're code related and not just a manual process? Manual process is scammy.
Um no, we actually have two. Uh Mr. Baxter and I have set up an accounting system to collect the information electronically. And we have a hot copy folder specifically. And we're triaging between either FEMA or the CARES Act dollars on the Rhode Island Department of Education. Just on Friday, sent out their first advisories on how to access the uh CARE Act dollars. Um and so we'll be pursuing both those pockets um for reimbursement. So we're going to all of these types of things are being captured, yes.
Okay, so did they give it? What's the timeframe for reimbursement? Is that going to be a long drawn out process?
Yeah, it's going to be actually through September twenty twenty two.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Check is in the mail.
Well, the money. Money in the bank, draw on it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I just have it five zero. Thank you. Number nine, discussion action contract award buildings and grounds floor wax and stripper, Mr. Oliver.
Once again, I'm before you asking uh your approval for this contract award for floor wax and stripper. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Farucci, is this in this year's budget?
No, this particular amount of money is in uh net wasn't next year's budget. But we've already cut that because we're buying it early because we're going to be in the building starting to wax floors in June rather than July. But the funding to cover this will be the contingents, other contingencies that are going to come forward. Specifically, the savings in the gas and diesel will offset these costs, so it's not a problem.
Thank you. I move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Being no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I just have it five zero. Number ten, discussion action contract award buildings and grounds sanitizing supplies, Mr. Oliver.
Uh once again, I'm asking your approval of this contract uh for sanitizing supplies. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is this part of COVID?
Uh that that yes, this is all part of COVID and uh part of our our bringing in some base uh ahead of time for uh next year budget.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. I move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
The eyes have it five zero. Discussion action. Contract award buildings and grounds custodial supplies, plastic liners, Mr. Oliver. Tell us about plastic liners.
They're uh uh trash bags. I requested your approval of this contract.
Thank you, sir. I move approval.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guys have it five zero. Thank you. Discussion action. Resolution urgent continued. Wait a minute, whoop. Number twelve, discussion action contract award buildings and grounds custodial cleaning supplies, Mr. Oliver.
Before you ask uh your your approval for this contract for uh cleaning supplies, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I move approval.
Second.
Discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
The eyes have it five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving right along. Number thirteen, discussion action resolution urging the continued appropriation. Of state and local revenues to support public education. Dr. Thornton.
Madam Chair, I don't have that document in my packet. I don't know if you have it as well.
I got it.
The resolution urging. Continued appropriation of state and local revenue to support public education. This was uh, I think originally written by East Greenwich School District. They sent it out to all of us and uh I think that we're all piggybacking on it. Whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has posed an unparalleled health threat to all Rhode Islanders, Americans, and the entire international community. And whereas, as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic, Governor Gina Raimondo declared a state of emergency in Rhode Island on March ninth. Twenty twenty, and the President of the United States declared a national state of emergency on March twelfth, twenty twenty. And whereas on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Raimondo directed Rhode Island's one hundred and thirty nine thousand. Public schools, school syst- students to stay at home. And practice distance learning. And whereas the basic education program's authority, purpose, and scope is to determine. Educational standards for Rhode Island's public schools. And the maintenance of local municipal appropriations to support its implementation. And maintenance of local municipal appropriations to support. The implementation. And whereas, in addition to meeting the instructional requirements of the basic educational program. School districts provide students with a wide array of other services, including transportation, school breakfast and lunch. Early childhood education, physical and mental health counseling, nutrition, physical education classes. Services to students with special needs, enrichment programs, extracurricular activities. And other vital programs. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has resulted in unprecedented economic downturn in the United States. Including Rhode Island by causing the layoff of millions of Americans and thousands of Rhode Islanders. And whereas, education is the cornerstone to economic prosperity. And will be vital to our recovery from the current worldwide pandemic accompanying economic downturn. And is essential to Rhode Island's future fiscal security. And whereas, reduction in state and local aid. Due to the economic repercussions of COVID nineteen pandemic. Could result in a more significant financial and economic inequity, thus increasing achievement gaps. And whereas, a lack of resources will leave many school districts incapable of meeting the mandates articulated in the Rhode Island Department. Of Elementary and Secondary Education's Basic Education Program, the DEP. Now therefore be it resolved. That the WOG School Committee respectfully requests that in order to meet its moral and legal obligation. To guarantee that all students receive an adequate, equitable, and meaningful education. That the Rhode Island General Assembly enacts Governor Raimondo's proposed appropriation for education aid. As it was initially presented to the legislature. And is currently articulated in House Bill twenty twenty H seven one seven one, introduced on January sixteenth, twenty twenty. By Representative Marvin Abner. Be it further resolved that the WOG School Committee urges the Rhode Island General Assembly. To preserve the language and intent of Rhode Island General Law sixteen dash seven dash twenty four. Minimum appropriation by a community for approved school expenses was to guarantee. Rhode Island's municipalities maintain their prior year's funding. So the districts can meet the mandates required by the basic education program. Resolve that a copy of this resolution will be forwarded to every Rhode Island municipality, school committee, state senator, state representative. And the governor. Is there any discussion? I move approval.
Second.
There being no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The eyes have it five to zero. I'll have that signed into you this evening, this morning. Thank you. In accordance with school committee policy, administration will be presenting those expenses ranging from one thousand dollars. To four thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars as a consent agenda. If a school committee member wishes to address any individual item noted. They may do so by referencing the index number of a particular document for an individual item to be removed from the consent agenda. And to be addressed separate and individually from this agenda. Number fourteen, discussion action contract awards one through four. Is everybody okay with those to go forward? My pop-ups. Okay, Mr. Farucci.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Item number fourteen.
That that speaks for itself. Uh the documents are there. They roll under the five thousand dollar mark. Um be happy to answer any particular questions, but we seek your approval.
I move approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Uh Madam Chair, you said one through four. There are five items. Are we going to discuss five independently?
No, I have four.
Madam, Madam Chair, just for clarity, um the agenda has four, but the source document has five. And one of them did not make it onto the agenda, so we're going to table that one particular item for um. The company name, L I K A R R.
That um I I'm sorry, Mr. Adams, that that particular item can't go on because it didn't make it onto the agenda.
Never mind.
Within the uh assigned times. So it'll be WOG Area Career and Tech Conference attendance for Mr. Letta. Building and grounds flood testing for environmental consulting, building and grounds lead inspections, lead safe inspections and consulting. Grant student equipment, Amazon Capital Services. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The eyes have it five zero. This time, um. Like to ask the superintendent to uh take some time to uh explain. Uh the graduation thing. The one thing I will say is that the school committee has nothing to do with planning graduation. The one thing I will say is that the school committee has nothing to do with planning graduation. And in this situation, uh, nobody has a choice. Basically, we're being told that we cannot have. Uh, multiple people together and that no graduation or party or anything like that can happen. It's not what we want. Uh, it's what is mandated by the state of Rhode Island, the governor of the state of Rhode Island. Uh, at this time due to COVID nineteen. And one last issue. Our kids are very special to us. Again, the school committee does not, uh. Plan or have any hand in, uh, ceremonies for awards and things of that. Nature scholarships and things like that. That is all done at the school level by the principals and staff. Uh, there. Uh, some schools in our district have had, uh. One school had it this week, had an award ceremony and they did it via Zoom. If anyone in the public is concerned that we are not, uh. Giving our, giving our seniors enough, I would advise you and, and ask you to please contact the principals. Of your student schools to see perhaps what might be done because we have no control over that. You could also, you could also call the superintendent what he'll call the principals. So perhaps it would be better if you as a parent, you have, uh, a, a relationship with, uh. Your, your school principals and vice principals, et cetera. Perhaps it would be better just to call and see if there's anything that can be done.
Madam Chair, I.
Do not supervise people.
I'd, I'd probably, um, limit that discussion to what's been said already based on the way the agenda is published.
Mm-hmm. So at this time, um, superintendent, if you would. On the graduations. Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, it's not on the agenda. I think we run a risk.
No, I understand. Just suffice it to say that everything's been mandated by the governor. Um, and executive orders hold the way to law. Section H, future meetings, monthly school committee meeting. Our next one is Tuesday, June ninth. Most likely on Zoom. Because the governor says she's not going to allow more than, uh, ten people at an outside, uh. At, at an inside, uh, event or meeting. And, um. This time I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, one thing about future meetings, um, achievement committee, achievement sub is going to try to have a meeting next week. Either Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I just had to confirm it with Mr. Cornell. So we'll probably have a Zoom meeting, um, one day next week. I just have to coordinate it with Ms. Amalat.
Um, Mr. Testa, could you, could you please try and, uh, next week is like, it's almost here. So.
It would be, uh, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
People, we need to give people some notice.
Yeah, so I, I'll, I'll have it done tomorrow. We'll have the date figured tomorrow. So. Um, we'll, at the very least, we'll give, let's see, uh, tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. I'll have three or four days. We'll get, we'll get an agenda posted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Testa.
Yeah, I just had to coordinate with Mr. Cornell. And he'll back me this afternoon.
Can you do that after this meeting?
Yep. Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Amalat, I'll just send you an email.
Thank you.
Okay.
So may I, may I have a, a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah, I just have it. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe and be well.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Kathy, are we?
As you're off.